Good evening. The work session of the Ossio School Board is being conducted in the forum room of the Educational Service Center, 11,293rd Avenue North in Maple Grove. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website no later than two business days after the work session has ended. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their name, starting with Jackie.
Jackie Mosquera-Jones, school board member.
Thomas Brooks, school board member.
Tim Palmetier, general counsel.
Christine Roblesky, consultant of teamwork.
Corey McIntyre, superintendent.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
And I, Tanya Simons, am present. The purpose of the school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. I'll ask that Superintendent McIntyre for his check-in for this work session. Turn it over to Superintendent.
Okay, well, thank you, Vice Chair Simons, and welcome, everybody. And just before I get started, we'll do a quick review of the agenda. I'll turn it over to Christine after a few opening comments. But tonight, we'll look at our, after grounding activity, sort of re-grounding on the roles of the chair and vice chair as we've made those adjustments to the governance structure. Revisit our ELS governance tools, talk about committee structure and the board role with committees, and how we align those to our five primary responsibilities. Talk about informal consultation to the superintendents around board parties as we're thinking ahead to next year. And this reminds me, Dr. Heil and I had a chance to meet earlier today, and I was doing a little reflection on that. And I want to just mention, keep in mind the hard work you've all done over the last 12 to 18 months to get us to this point. You landed the district on a new strategic plan, which took a lot of work. Since then, and we've implemented that, a new operational plan, department plans, as we're now learning work with the site plans, and getting alignment with that to the vision cards that we have two left to present. So that's a really large structural change that will, because of your hard work, position the district to the next, move to the next level. And as we're now entering in the process of beginning to think about setting the next year's high priority initiatives, there's a lot of initiatives, but how do we land on one of the most highest priority ones? And that'll have a conversation later tonight. Also, through all that, here recently, doing a superintendent search, and you're readying yourself for whether or not to go out to the public for addressing our facility needs with the referendum. So those are big, big challenges for any school board, and you've tackled those head-on. So I just, I always like to give you some perspective, because we always like to look at the next thing and the next thing. And you've done some really important, big work, positioning yourselves as a board and the administration for the next set of high-impact work. So with that, I'll turn over to Christine to get us started with our agenda. So thank you, Christine, for being with us tonight.
Thank you. We'll be fine. We have kind of the agenda broken up into each hour, if you will. So as Corey mentioned, we're going to do a quick grounding activity. Jackie will take us through the roles of the chair and vice chair. And I understand that you're aware of them, but we'll just revisit them. And then we'll go over some of the governance tools, which will include the survey results. And we have survey results from the boards and self-evaluation from the last three years. That'll be the first hour. Then we'll take the second hour to really talk about committees, and aligning committees, and the role of the committee under the board, or as a management committee. So we'll talk a bit about that in the second hour. And then the third hour, we'll talk about those priorities and the topics that you all submitted to the survey that you completed last week. So that'll be the last hour, and then we'll finish up with some shared messages and some of your thoughts on the session tonight. And then we'll be prepared to move on after that. Does that sound good, everybody? Okay. I believe you have all materials in your packets. Corey and I have some extra materials in case you need them, as reminders. I'm going to try and keep us moving along with the slide show here that Sheri has set up for us. Just quickly, going over some norms and expectations that we've had in the past, but just a good reminder to listen and be present tonight. Bring your individual perspectives, but as we've mentioned, I don't know how many times with Teamworks. Act and make decisions in the district interest. Seek to understand differences, be curious. Act professionally as a high-functioning school board, because that's what we've been working for for two and a half, three years now. Choose to assume positive intent and competency in others. And that comes out of the leadership choices activity we have. So, quick grounding activity, which I know you like to do. So, what I'm going to ask you to do, if you have a phone devices, we usually have pictures with us. This is one time I would invite you to pull them out. And let's find a partner. And I'm going to ask us, in about two minutes' time each, the first round will be, find a partner and share a family picture, whatever you'd like to share. Find a new partner, share some kind of animal picture that you may have. Doesn't have to be recent. The third round will be, share some kind of plant, flower, nature picture. Fourth is a picture with no people in it. And then the fifth is some kind of celebration. So we're just going to do that quickly. It's a way for us to get grounded, kind of welcome and get to know each other a little bit as you work together. And so I'm going to say, we can start right now, and I'll let you know when to move on to a new partner. So first one, family picture. And we can include family pictures if you like.
I was just going to say, we should include.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Feel free.
All right.
I love the thought of family pictures.
This is my guy here.
Okay. I know. Like, if I had to find a relationship, that's my whole thing.
Well, that's not everybody.
Family picture. A full family picture. I have a me and Alexis picture, since it's her and I.
Look at you with what on this.
Well, only because it's not everybody, it's not. My husband and my kids, we went skiing a couple of days ago. The first time.
Although she, when she was four, she had a very strange, she doesn't know. When I posted it on Facebook, and she texted me, she's like, "This is a picture of me on Facebook." And I said, "It's your mom." And I could post whatever.
Exactly.
You know, this is the first one.
This is the intensive, embarrassing. Down the hill. That's us. Two boys. Now, she's like, "Oh, my God."
That's too sad. I'm like, "Oh, mercy, I guess you know this daughter." Kind of daughter.
Yeah.
See, the next one. Two boys.
Right? They'll always be here for us.
We got an excellent animal picture.
Oh, my God. We're ready to move on. Well, that's not a good one of them, but that is. What do you see?
And I'll find a new partner and share an animal picture.
So that's science mushroom. So. All right. All right. Animal? Oh, oh.
I have a lot of cat pictures.
Oh, my gosh. Lauren said that was a screen thing.
I have one cat, which is a lot of pictures.
I don't know if I have any other ones. That's me and my dogs, my golden one. Okay. That's our dog. Oh, yeah. Oh, I met him too. Yeah. He's a little bigger, so when you're nuts. I laugh. I'm like, "What's going on?" I know. Because they're like, they like to be like, well, I have two. But they're, like, this one, she's always like this, like, she's curled up in a tiny ball, like, right here. Wait, so you want to hire daughters? No, that's me. This is like, last month. I was placing her on the corner. That's, that's my daughter that probably looks like me with the other dad. What's your family picture? Oh, yeah. Well, I don't have that many. Hard to get a group shot. But the picture that I showed Kim was one of these pictures. We just went skiing. It had been one of the first times. Yeah, so this was everybody, I obviously took the picture, so I'm not in it. But it was Highland. Yeah. How about you guys?
You can only have 30 seconds, and then find a new partner ever.
I think for our time. I just had a personal swan. This was our adopted son, so he's not, but that's. Yeah.
Now, who wants to? Yeah. A flower or a plant picture.
A flower? Oh, boy. I'm a flower girl. This one's going to be hard for.
Yeah, I don't.
Oh, my gosh, it's not really, look at this. It's right there. My daughter, or my husband, which is a picture for me. Is that a natural flower? Yes. Got me. Otherwise, I'd be like, "Oh, my God." Because I don't take nature pictures. Okay, you're good on this one. You're, okay, this might be a better picture. That's nature, where's it? I was just going to say.
Yeah.
Okay, you're close for the pictures. I got it. You know, I have a boyfriend, usually he gets pictures. Oh, there you go. There's some pictures. Usually I'm enjoying pictures of flowers from my boyfriend. Oh, that's. Do you have a picture of your sister? I wonder. I have two boys. I kind of stayed away for a while because. Two boys. It's cool when I remember my best friend.
We just got that because we were sure.
What are their girlfriends in the twenties? During their twenties. Yeah, during their twenties. And so it was kind of like.
If there's any people there around, I'm just like, "Oh, yeah."
Yeah. It was pretty horrible, but, you know. Like. They're down the trails. Oh, no. Because it was, he was trying to turn me off. Yeah, yeah, flower, flower.
He tries to do little things.
Find a new partner and have a live. A no-people picture. A no-people picture.
A no-people.
That's like the same one we just did.
Who does your family or kids? I'll just shoot that real quick. Cheating.
That's Calvin's.
Corey, watch the paper. Watch the person who's going to be like, "Bye."
You want to see, you want to see your love?
I'm going to see Sheri and Kim.
I agree, Kim. Okay. Sorry. That's all people. This is scenery?
Me and Nick.
Some friends. You're like, you're trying to write some fiction. You're like, "I think."
That was pretty good.
So I, I have one, so, yeah, we all, we all get around and do these houses. It's like a big competition. And then we actually pick neutral parties, and so, like, post the pictures.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really fun. All my family, so. She's kind of like, "My first day." We call her Julia. Like, "Yeah." Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Final round. One final partner and a celebration picture.
Oh, right.
Celebration.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Can this summer maybe?
Okay, oh, cool.
I don't think so. We haven't done each other. Celebrating. Celebration.
Oh, Tim.
I got it. I actually should use this. So, Christmas, we make old-fashioned.
Wait, so who is who there?
That's my son, Kyle.
Kind of finds, I was like, "We'll find out."
That's my wife, Rachel.
Okay, she looks so, I was like, "That's your wife?" Okay, I thought it was your dad.
No, no, that's not. She's retired.
Oh, wow.
I have two for you.
Well, sure.
She gets that a lot, and then that's the dog.
I can make this have one.
Um, yeah, one other, one other.
Well, one of my footballs is actually one of them.
That's right.
Yeah.
Cover it, cover it. So we're somewhere.
Riley's turned 13 months. 13, 14, and 15. Another one of the candidates, she got her.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, she got her first letter. She was pretty, pretty happy.
Okay.
We celebrated.
Right.
She was awful track.
Yeah.
So did I start her this week?
Yesterday.
Okay.
And we got.
Come back to the table and have a meet.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Yeah. It's from others, and missing.
I like that.
Oh, my God.
It's fun. Thank you.
What a good activity.
We do that together. So, again, the idea is help you get to know each other a little bit more. Did anyone learn anything new and interesting about somebody in the room?
Yeah, Corey is a professional photographer.
Lucky shot, so.
Well, Tim, I thought his wife was his daughter, so that was.
No. He's actually older than I am.
Heather's daughter makes sourdough bread.
Really? I'm telling his daughter to spread the papers.
All right, so now we'll get into a little bit of the bulk of the meeting. And then I hand it over to, I think Jackie was going to do the update on the role of the chair and vice chair.
Yeah, so just in coming to an agreement on chair and vice chair for this board, we have decided that I would leave the regular meetings and vice chair, Simons, would facilitate the work sessions, and that we would make sure that there is a March work session on board member interests, which is happening right now. And then we are intending on working together to increase listening sessions and community conversations, particularly when there are things that we think the community might be extra interested in, that we would try to attend some community events together. Our goal is to really show a strong, functioning, unified board. That we'd work on some processes for tracking board member agenda requests. There's been in the past, regardless of who's chair, requests of things to happen, and then not finding out where that request happened, or feeling like it didn't go through. So we want a way to track that, so we can go back to it if we, if we need to. And then a process for committee recommendations, and closing the loop on a lot of those things. Like, DPAC made all these recommendations. Where is it in the operational plan? Is it, or is it not, is something we can do, same with APAC, et cetera. So that's just the high-level. Tony and I are meeting Thursday night, assuming I feel better by then, to start working on some of these documents.
Great. And the committee recommendations discussion, we'll have, we'll touch on that tonight as well.
Exactly.
All right. Now, we want to do that quick.
Phew.
Did you have, did you want to add anything, any comments from the board or the superintendent?
Well, I think I would just add, as we meet weekly, or whenever we do, tend to meet Thursday mornings, but not every week with competing things. So I think we can, as, we're going to start pulling Kim into those meetings as well, so we can work in partnership on a few of those items there, especially the tracking process for agenda requests. We'd be like, we'd be checking in unregularly. And then listening sessions, I saw Sheri stepped out. We just have placeholders for some listening sessions next year, but we haven't had a chance to talk about, and how we want that to look different as we're building out calendars for next year. So that's something we might do as well as.
Well, with possible bond, you know, with a possible bond, there'll be a lot of community engagement with that, so.
That's without that.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I have a couple of questions. I saw one thing, I guess the first question is the change to the chair and vice chair. Is that intended to be kind of a permanent change from here on out? Or is this just a Jackie Tuckett thing? And like, or is the assumption that would be up to whoever is chair, vice chair at that time?
The, if you don't mind, I think the only thing that's really different is that the vice chair is facilitating the work sessions. And that's a, I mean, that's our personal agreement.
Yeah, I think, you know, different boards have different ways of working for chair and vice chair. So I think this is, will be, you know, a nice test case to say, is this the way that we want to work in going forward? But I think it's probably up to each chair and vice chair in how that work is allocated. But I think it'll be a nice test case to, to see how we like it and how it goes, and it's something we want to keep in place.
And we do have policies, we do have policies that are in our board policies that are not being changed. So all those things are still.
I do, I feel like the vice chair position is often just kind of an extra leadership position. And so I do like that the vice chair has a formal role. And so I do, I am curious to see how it goes, and, you know, if it's something that we should continue. But, yeah, I like that the vice chair has a formal role of some sort, so just wanted to comment on that. And then, when is the March session on board member interests? This is the last one.
You're in it.
Okay. And then the last question, it's not really a question, I would say, listening sessions. For me, I've been a little bit of a struggle, and I haven't found a lot of them to be as successful as we hope. It's always great to hear from staff, a lot of the staff that we hear from often. And so if there's a way that we can be more intentional about assigning maybe a specific topic, or the location, or making it hybrid, whatever it is, whatever we have been doing in the past, for me, wasn't necessarily worth the amount of time that went into creating it. So I just wanted to kind of state that, that if there's a way we can be more creative and intentional, I would appreciate that, but that's it.
And I have a question, Thomas, since I haven't experienced that in the past, so it's less like community, not as many parents or communities more. Okay. Okay.
Maybe a couple of staff members will come in. It's their time with the board, which is great, but I think not what we expected.
It's been varied. When we first started, we had several people come, and we had them at different schools. And then we did them online, and we had quite a few people come when we did it online. It was harder to facilitate, I think. And then we decided to have more structured listening sessions than those where, you know, right after the pandemic. And I don't know if that's fatigue on everyone's part, or if it's, but I, I think I can speak for Tanya as well. We're definitely open on whatever ideas. I've already been trying to reach out to PTO presidents and stuff. Like, I invited them all to the superintendent's search to try to get contact with individual schools a little better. But any other ideas?
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with Thomas's suggestion of having a topic idea, because I think a lot of specific topics come to us regularly. But when we have this ambiguous format, I think we would get more communication, more activity and connection if we said, "Okay, we're going to have a listening session this month, and it's going to be on bullying and harassment. And next month, it's going to be on whatever topic is pressing the community." I think we might get more people attending.
There are a number of ways that you can structure listening sessions. It sounds like you already switched once or twice. And there's certainly lots out there that you'd be looking at for models and to try out. And I saw lots of head shaking, nodding, head shaking. And just a comment about the chair leading regular meetings and the vice chair facilitating work sessions. That's something we see frequently at Teamworks. When I talk a little bit about board structure, it's pretty common that we would see, and it's something that you as a board, if you like that idea, you could certainly say, "We would like this to be sort of a training ground," if you will. A lot of school boards think of the vice chair position as a way to get some, some training or development in order to become chair at some point. And again, we know because you decide annually who's going to be the officers, that is no guarantee. But many school boards choose that as a pathway to try and have some understanding about the role of chair or vice chair. And so you're not walking into the role of chair sort of blindly. No, you're not.
And just a couple of comments I'd add is, the, we've done a variety of attempts at, kind of, I feel like the same way, it's kind of failed attempts at how do we do with listening sessions to get really good engagement. Way back when I first started, they were in person right before work sessions out on the different sites. I've had mixed attendance, if I remember back. Not heavily attended, but better at times. So maybe we can generate a list of different structures and share those, and maybe just kind of survey you again on what ones resonate, or what ones, or maybe you can come up with an idea off of one of those ideas for what works in your, your busy schedules too, because I know you have a lot to think about from that standpoint, too. So, and then I would suggest, based on Thomas's comment, your organizational meetings are a great opportunity as you, every year, rethink who's the officers. In that January meeting, you have a chance, usually in a PD session or something like it, you can review these responsibilities, see if they still work. Do it again in July. So you always got some natural touchpoints throughout the year. Is that still working for you, or do you want to tweak it? I love why you said that, if we live it a little bit, maybe you'll adjust it.
And Christine, I just wanted to add to, I just really commend both Jackie and Tanya. I feel like the way you're working together is representing all of us well, because, you know, being out in the community, community members are watching to see, you know, can we trust? Is the board going to work together? Are all board members acting professional and respectful and kind? So I just appreciate your style of communicating and just working so respectfully. I think it represents us well, so thank you.
Agreed.
We save our fighting for later.
I didn't have some comments.
You know, Irish gotta do it.
Right, and it is the week for it. All right, so I'll just keep us moving then, and move on to a quick overview of the education leadership system. You are familiar with this, and your administrators are familiar with this, and you have it in your packet. So as I mentioned at the start, you know, there's that dotted line that you all see there, where there's district interest in the top three ovals, and then self-interest in the bottom. Those top three ovals represent the roles of the adults in the district and what your responsibilities are. So your governance role is a board, the management team, the office of the superintendent, and then the district administrators. And as we've talked about before, we consider principals to be district administrators. So those three groups of adults must operate in district interest. So when they're making decisions, when you're deliberating, your decisions are made from that perspective. The other three ovals down there, the schools and programs, the staff there, parents and families, and members of the public, they are operating in self-interest, and we would expect them to do that. So their responsibility is, as a parent, to be responsible for their children. We want them to be paying attention to what's happening with their own children. We don't, we don't expect them to worry about, think about all the other students in the district. That's for the other groups of adults. We hope that, right, when a referendum comes around, that they are operating and thinking in the interest of all the students in the district, but we really want them to concentrate on their own. Same with teachers and program staff. We want them to concentrate on the scholars that are in front of them every day, so that they're getting that individualized attention. So that's what we mean when we differentiate between district interest and self-interest. It's how you're making decisions, who you're concentrating on. And then in the center is that desired daily experience that we're striving to meet in your district. And that is that great connection that students, staff, and families have. And we have that list, or we used to call it the mission delivery point, of what you would like to see in the district. The strategic plan that you created was built around those desired daily experiences. And then you see around the outside there, the primary roles of each of those groups of adults is listed. So you and your governance role, and we'll talk about that briefly again, the management team, in terms of their management role. So you're working toward excellence in governance. The superintendent and the superintendent's team is working toward excellence in management. And then we have the role of consultation for those other groups of adults. And we know that students also have a role of consultation as well. This is really focusing on the adults in the system that support that desired daily experience. So we ask staff, as we were just talking about with listening sessions, we ask families, we ask members of the public to consult with you, sometimes on committees, sometimes in listening sessions, sometimes in open forums, to give you input or feedback prior to making a decision. And so that role of consultation can be structured. I know we've talked about wanting to have representation. So is that role of consultation simply a lot of emails that you're receiving when they're already a little bit hot over a topic? Or are you seeking out consultation that's more representative, and that's more structured, that will help you inform your decisions? So those are kind of the, the big picture of the education leadership system. As I mentioned, it's the six groups of adults. We know that many school districts now are working with scholars. Some of you, like in your district, have representatives, student representatives on your school board, and they have a specific role. Pretty much every district that we're working with right now includes students as part of a role of consultation in any kind of engagement that we're doing, often going directly into the classroom. We mentioned the two levels of interest there, the district and self-interest, and the different authorities. Within each of those groups, there are some specific responsibilities. And we've talked about some of them with you and some different accountabilities. So we have tools and processes that we have practiced with you. We call them frameworks, in order to be able to build on that partnership and really support those roles, so that you can have that excellence in governance and management. We'll talk about a couple of them today, so that we can keep revisiting them. Your authorities, your primary responsibilities there, as we've talked about before, are district policy and governance. And so you work with Tim on your policy committee, stay up to date on your policies. I know you have new policies that come up, either because the state tells you you must, or it's something that you are interested in at the district level, and you want to update your policies. So that is something, you do have a policy review cycle, I think, here. So if you're staying on track. and governance. And so you work with Tim on your policy committee, stay up to date on your policies. I know you have new policies that come up either because the state tells you you must, or that it's something that you are interested in at the district level and you want to update your policies. So that is something, you do have a policy review cycle, I think, here. So that you're staying on track with the 100s, 200s, 300s on an ongoing basis. I think I've shared with you, some districts that we've worked with hadn't updated their policies, didn't have a policy review cycle for 20 years. So the new superintendent, thankfully, that's not you, Dr. Heil, had a, really had lived his first two years in the district. So luckily, you don't, you're not in that situation. The second responsibility is really around performance oversight and direction of the organization. So you just completed your strategic plan. That's one of the big responsibilities in that regard. You have monitoring reports that are coming from the administrative team on that strategic plan. And so that's part of the oversight role. Of course, you approve your budget every year. That's a big piece of saying, how are the resources being directed across the district? The third item there, board governance policy, that's really around self-governance. So how is the board operating? What are the expectations you have, not just for behavior, but how you are agreeing to work together, how you're going to hold the full board accountable? And we're going to review your survey here. So that's some of your self-evaluation. And I know that you have some of those 200 policies, 209, that talk about, you know, how are we going to agree to be and work together? And we've talked about the possibility of maybe having a board governance handbook at some point. We've talked about it in some form or another for the last couple of years. It is something that we've been working on with a number of school districts. And I would invite you to consider that as you move forward with this new board as well. The fourth responsibility is your relationship with your superintendent. It sounds like you've had a good one and that you will have another good relationship with your superintendent.
Actually, even better. Sorry.
Nailed it.
Well, and it begins with that contract, right? So what are the expectations you have? And then what's the, what is the evaluation? Is that evaluation tied to your strategic plan? Hopefully, it is or will be. And then what does that communication look like? And so that's really critical. Some of the tools that we're going to talk about tonight and that you've used with the superintendent are really helpful in not just superintendent relations, but relations with the office of the superintendent, so that extension with the cabinet. And I know that that's one of your goals, too, is to really start to build an even tighter relationship with the whole office of the superintendent, so that we can make sure that the strategic plan is humming along from implementation to the oversight. And then that fifth responsibility is around what you've been talking about already, which is around public engagement. So how do you, as a board, advocate on behalf of the district? And then how do you direct the administrative team to engage the community so that you can make wise decisions as a school board? We've talked about, you know, do you have a specific board engagement plan? We've done that with some other school boards before. Again, keeping it in the role of governance, but that's something you could explore as well. And I know that you have joined the board primarily because you've had a direct desire to be engaged. Started as a community member or parent, perhaps, and then you came onto the board saying, I really want that perspective to be represented. And now that you're here, you get to represent everyone across the entire district. So again, kind of a high view of your primary responsibilities. I'm going to get into your review of the school board and what's been fun for me to be able to work with you these last three years. So we've done this survey now since 2021, and you'll see the 2021 results in a few minutes, is to see these very same questions, and you have them in your packet, and your response to these questions over time. So all six board members did respond to the survey. So you'll see on the right side there is the, the survey response here. And this was a multi-part question. So this is around your five key roles, these roles here, around district governance and policy, around your oversight role, around how you operate, around superintendent relations. So that third one is around board operations and your self-governance. The fourth is superintendent relations. And then the fifth is your role of public engagement. So you can see the blue and the green. The green is you're rating yourself that you agree strongly, that you are working well in terms of district policy. The blue is that you are working pretty well, and that the yellow is your performance is low. So you can see that you have more green and blue in 2023 for the assessment than you did in 2022. So there is some growth. There's a little bit of positive movement there. And you have the questions, so we can revisit this again next year. But again, just wanted you to see your own board evaluation of how you are in each of those five areas. It looks like, once again, your strongest area, which is consistent with what you've done the last couple of years, is in superintendent relations. And then the second is around operational oversight. Looks like you've made a lot more progress in that area this year than what you assessed last year. And then district policy continues to remain strong. Continue to see room for growth there under your board self-governance and then around public engagement, which is consistent, I think, with what you've been saying around the table. I think we all have a copy of the survey results as well. Any surprises or points of interest from you seeing this information? And for Sarah, this is brand new.
Yeah.
So you're joining a board where, when it's making slow growth progress over time?
I think I am a little surprised by the rule on public engagement. Yeah, so I think just curious where that's coming from, or? Yeah.
Yeah, and I expect that. So that would probably have come from one board member. And we didn't have this as an open-ended question, but we can certainly explore, even the fact that you were mentioning that you would like to maybe explore public engagement, listening sessions differently, might be part of the reason. Some of us are harsh raters on ourselves, and maybe we just simply want to do more than we have.
I would say just for myself personally this time, I don't know if it was necessarily state of mind at the time that I did the surgery, but I just, I wasn't feeling as optimistic about things. You know, I was recovering from surgery, for one thing, but it was not, I don't want to, I, it just wasn't like sunshine and roses, you know? I don't, I don't know how else to explain it. I had a very difficult time, because I was like, I wish there was an in-between for some of these, or a definition for what, what we were looking for in the answer. Because like, when it comes to like, public engagement or things like that, like, you, you said it could be something, it could be on that person, or it could be on, like, how the board is functioning. And I had a hard time answering all of the questions for those reasons. Because I was like, well, do I feel like I'm doing this well? Do I feel like we are doing this well? Do I feel like we could do better, even though we are doing it well? That kind of thing. So I felt like I judged harsher than I did the year before.
And yet, the board seems to have seen improvement.
Yeah.
So what's interesting with that is then we can start to work on maybe defining these from the board's perspective. I don't want to define them for you, but to be able to say, this is now what we mean by public engagement. So keep, I would encourage you to keep the same types of evaluation in place, so that you can see the progress over time. And where you might need a lift, but this is moving in a positive direction.
I think, I think it's important, too, because in my short time here, so you have gone on four years, there's been 10 board members. So there's change that happens. And being able to just kind of ground yourself back on the same markers is really good. Grounding for the board, whatever the makeup of the board is, and that might be the new normal, as boards change. I think you go back in time and maybe coming in your career, boards were more stable in the past. There was longer, you have a really long term. That's turning out to be not very normal anymore.
Right.
You know? So the terms are shorter, there's more change, and having some consistent way of being able to compare and, and that gives you feedback on where you want to put your focus for growth. So.
And if you think about how contentious the political environment has been over the last three or four years, to see that your board has made even incremental progress, I think is to be celebrated. Again, it doesn't, you know, everything is sunshine and roses. It's hard work, like any relationship is. It's really hard work to have a board that functions well together. And I'm sure Superintendent Heil can attest to that. You've both worked in other districts, and we've worked with many districts where, you know, sometimes you hit a really solid groove and you're happy, and then things shift. But it's always work to try and keep the board operating and functioning together. It doesn't mean that you all have to agree, but it's how you agree to work together toward the district's goals. Any other comments about this slide? All right. So now I'm going to highlight just a few myths, and some of you are familiar with this as well. And this is what you struggle with. I think we've had conversations individually and as a board about these items. What you know, now being on the board, and what community members think your responsibility is, are often two different things, right? People think you operate, for example, like a city council, and you don't. So many people think that governance is theoretical and optional. It's not. Your strength as a school board comes from the board as a whole. So no one board member can make a decision on behalf of the board. You have to make that decision together. So if you are going to be working on behalf of the scholars in the district and the staff and the families, you need to be working in a strong governance function. And then, we've had some interesting conversations about this, but there is a myth that freedom of the speech grants anyone the right for their opinion, even after an act of governance. So what do we mean by that? It means that your freedom of speech doesn't supersede your responsibility as a board member when you're at the board table. And there have been some interesting tests about this as well, right? Not just here in Osseo, but elsewhere. So you have, we talked about the 200 series, board conduct and your expectations of board members. There have been board members, even in this district, who has, who have stepped down because of their, they've used their freedom of speech right, and that has then put them in jeopardy in terms of their role as a board member, not just in this district and others, right? And so we've, I think that came out as we did the strategic planning process, a former board chair that ended up stepping down because of comments made, not even at the board table.
Christine.
Yeah.
So this, this, in terms of governance and the model of governance, it's, it's not a legislatively defined framework. It's, the authority of the board is defined in legislation in terms of what we have scope and authority over in some parameters. We choose to adopt a system of governance in the education leadership system as a practical way in which we agree to work. And all of the norms within it, our choices that we make, and the list about serving on the board, I think, again, it's not a legal framework. It's, it's a choice in how we operate to best serve our district.
Right.
Other states have different models of governance as well. So I, I just want to make that clear, that this is not a legislative framework.
BLS framework?
Right.
This is a governance framework.
Yeah, that we choose to adopt.
Yeah. And that isn't aligned, it's aligned closely with, not exactly, with the Minnesota School Boards Association and many of the standards of practice for school boards as well. Your authority in terms of the law in Minnesota does come from the board as a whole, though. So you individually do not have the right to be able to direct the superintendent, for example. That comes from the board as a whole.
The other interesting thing in statute is, so, it's absolutely correct. So the, and it's pretty broad categories in terms of talking about board authority. And then there's a statute that talks about superintendents and what superintendents have authority over. So it doesn't play out in a hard and fast way, but when you look at the roles as defined under the statute that deals with superintendent responsibilities versus school board responsibilities, I mean, it parallels that. But it is, this is a model, not a statute, but it parallels and works off of those, I would say.
Statutes, right.
Yeah.
It is definitely not in conflict with the statute.
No, not in, not in conflict at all, consistent with that.
We will, there are some instances of state law, for example, that actually push the board into a management role. And some of those are placement on committees, even. And so it's, it's in direct conflict with a strong governance role. And so we can get into that when we talk about the committees a little bit.
Student discipline and expulsions.
Student discipline, yeah.
Just wanted to add, I, I guess, kind of branching off of what Tanya was saying. I understand and agree with the intention behind the freedom of speech grants the right for individual, even after an act of governance. I get the spirit of it, but I don't appreciate the wording of it, because a right is a right, period. And then this is like saying, well, you don't have that right. And it could be interpreted in a way that it's not intended to be, saying like, for example, we make a decision as a board, and I disagree with the decision that we made. So this has come up in our board before, which is why I'm bringing it up now, is that if, if I were to come out and say, the board has made this decision, I believe we should have made this decision, but this is what the board is doing, that's still my right. I'm still allowed to do that. Right?
Right. You are allowed to do that. A, a high-functioning school board would follow that we have our debate, we have our disagreements, but the board acts. And once the board acts, then it's our responsibility as a full board to put the, the weight of the board behind that, make sure it's implemented as the board decides.
Correct. So we would still be doing that. But if our constituents are saying, you know, why did you make this decision? Why are you standing behind this? I can say, as a board member, I stand by the decision that the board made, but I don't agree with this decision. I understand your perspective. I don't share the decision, the perspective of my fellow colleagues, but I'm still participating in it because that's my obligation, because that's the decision we made. But it's still my right to say I disagree with it.
Correct. Yeah, you have the, you have the right to speak as you will. And I would say, you could probably reflect back on the debate that hopefully you would have had to say, you know, I invite you, as a community member, to, to hear what I had to say right up until we made that decision. And now, as a board member, as you said, it's our responsibility to move forward and implement what the board has decided.
Right.
There's just, there is a power to being able to, even if you disagreed with the board decision, to, once it's made, to being able to say, and now we're going to move forward and I'm going to leave that behind. Anyone can reflect back on what my decision was and what my debate was, and why I voted the way I did, but now let's, we need to move forward.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying on that. I just think it's, it's not accurate. You're saying that it's not, that, that's a myth, that the board doesn't have that right, and they do in fact have that right.
Well, I would just add, when, when that happens, it undermines sometimes the effort of the administration to carry out the direction the board gives us, right?
It might.
If I know that four of you said yes and two of you said no, and you're actively working against a six-member decision, that, that's hard, right?
Yeah.
That's challenging.
It is.
Knowing that as a group of six, you landed on a majority vote. That's the, I think, the nuance of it. You're all really good in this room about, and you're all six who are here, you're all good about being really good, about, here's your position individually.
Right.
On whatever issue it is. And I think you've gotten better at, once you've made a board decision and that sets the course, acknowledging that now we need to support that to be successful, right, versus.
I just, there's.
Am I saying that right?
I get what you're saying. I'm just, I'm going to give you like a, an example. That's me, right? I completely disagree with the use of technology in schools at the level that it's at. I don't think that we should be using it the way that we do, and I've voiced my opinion about that many times. I've voted against things. But every time we've implemented it, even though I've shared that I didn't agree with it, I've done everything I could to support the administration and the team in rolling out those implementations. But I'm never going to back down on that, right? Like, it's still my firm belief that kindergartners don't need iPads.
Right. And, and you are making that decision from what you believe is the district's interest to not an individual.
Right. But I will continue to, every time that issue comes up, I'm going to continue to speak on that as a board member, even though the board in the past has said, well, this is what we're going to do, and we voted on it, and you were the lone wolf that didn't agree. I'm still going to continue. That's, that's where I'm trying to get, is that I'm still going to continue, that's, that's where I'm trying to get, is that I just don't think it's right to say that board members don't have the right to continue to speak out against issues that they disagree with fundamentally.
And, I hear what you have to say. And it's not saying that, that, that you don't have a right to speak.
It does, it says they don't have the right.
That that freedom of speech right doesn't supersede the act of governance. So you as board members do have a responsibility and there are times when what you say at a board table or as a board member, you may be held responsible for based on your policies and what you have in place. So that has been tested out. So it's many things in that statement.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, is that's why I think it should be worded differently. It's because that, that's different than what I'm saying.
All right, I may, I may revise this.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the rest of the board? Questions? Okay, I'm going to keep us moving then onto number three. Myth number three is that you as board members can turn off and turn on your board status whenever you feel like. I think we've talked about this before. Everyone in the district knows who you are. You come in and you say, I'm here as a parent. And the staff people are going, sure, I know you're here as a parent, but you are a board member and you're a board member always in my mind. And they are always making their decisions based on the fact that you are a board member. And so, and Sarah, I think we talked about this when you did your orientation. So there is that, even if for you, you wouldn't want it to be that way and have people perceive you as a board member, that you really are just there to talk about your student and your kids, that it's really hard for others in the community to turn that off. And so they're making decisions and responding to you based on you as a board member.
Can I ask a question? In our professional development meeting, Director Grady had made a comment that it wasn't appropriate for a board member to say, that, to introduce themselves as a board member, like at a parent-teacher conference type situation at our last professional development. I can't remember her exact words, but do you remember what I'm talking about?
I don't remember the specifics of that.
Well, so I guess what I'm wondering is, her perspective was that it was not a positive thing to do. And then here we're talking about that it, that you're always a board member. And as board members, I've heard other board, I've talked to board members across the state and there's such a wide range of perspectives on how do you approach, you know, like parent-teacher conferences or going to the school carnival or whatever, if you should lead with, I'm a board member, or if you should not lead with that. I guess what is the best practice when it comes to being both a parent and a board member?
So the, the high level suggestion is, when you're there in your board role, of course, you're going to introduce yourself as a board member representing the district. If you are there as a parent, and we know that there are board members who are single parents, who you want to go and represent your children and to the best of your ability, you're there as a parent only, but also understanding that people are responding to you, knowing that you are a board member. So it's really, you can certainly say, I know you know I'm a board member. I'm here tonight as a parent and I understand that that may be hard for you as a teacher, but I'm going to focus on, you know, that role as a parent tonight. So it's transparent.
Well, I guess why I'm asking is-
Calling yourself a board member, that's what you are.
I've had people recognize me like at the grocery store and be like, oh, Heather Douglas, school board member, I want to talk to you about this issue. And I've been in parent-teacher conference meetings where that teacher did not know that I was a board member. And then it was later-
You changed things.
Yeah, it's so like, it's uncomfortable. So I get that, I'm just wondering, like, what's best practice for that?
Well, I would say being transparent is probably good. You certainly don't want to put teachers on guard in any way, but you are board members and you're always board members. And probably someone else in that building knows that you are a school board member and there's a lot of-
Well, I made the assumption that that person knew, just because I was, they, they'd had one of my other kids already and it was kind of a weird situation.
So I think, like for this, this is a bit more general and I think when we try to talk about policy or then, I think the words become really important then when we get to that point of what is the policies that we're placing on ourselves. I think this is a general framework and has nuance. And I think that, it's been my observation that we've worked pretty well. So we might be having a lot of discussion about the specific language. I think for purposes of this, I think it's sort of guidelines to the point where we get putting it in policy or a code of conduct that I think the language is really going to be imperative at that point in time.
This is a lot about your interaction with community members, with each other, with understanding the role of the board. I've worked with a school board chair who used to be the one that went to all the PTA meetings and conferences. And once she became board chair, her husband took on that role because she didn't want to influence in any way or have, from her perspective, staff feeling intimidated in any way by her being present at those meetings. Again, because there are so many topics that were coming forward and some of them were directly related to schools that she worked in. Shall I keep us moving? All right, so some other myth, and I'll try to move through these a little bit more quickly then, that board members represent a portion of the community or a specific party or orientation. You represent, as we've talked about, the whole district. There are some school districts that do have seats that are not at large. Yours are all at large. You represent the whole school district and that's your responsibility. Though there may be some of your constituents who think that you must represent one constituency only, that is not what your responsibility is. It's to everyone. There's also this myth out there that's been around for decades, probably centuries, that people who work in public education are less competent, less qualified or less professional than other professions. And people make that assumption, I think about school boards as well. You have a higher degree of accountability than many other types of boards, not a lesser degree of accountability. So the expectation is that you should perform at that higher professional level. Same thing with school administrators. There are so many licensure requirements and requirements that people are unaware of, we've talked about this in the past, that superintendent requires a license, teachers require a license, principals require a license, that it is one of the few public areas where you must meet those kinds of standards. All right, and how many of you have heard this? Public education will operate better if it is run like a business. That has been around a good long time. Again, many businesses have more leeway than many of you in school systems do. So a lot of strings that come with the work of public education. And then finally, number seven, and that there are low expectations of school boards to be professional and competent. Again, we would argue that there's a higher expectation that you be professional and competent because of your public role and the expectations that are come. And then the six primary responsibilities of your administrators, your management team, and this works in partnership with your responsibilities as a governing board. So resource management, so as John is, has that well under his umbrella or umbrellas. So everything from financial to human and physical. The instructional leadership, not just at the principal level, but at the district level as well. Your administrators are responsible for your performance management system and professional development across the system, for your continuous improvement cycle, for all the procedures and practices that align with the policies that you all put in place and update. And then the sixth responsibility is really around the staff, parent and community relations. So they're responsible for implementing that engagement that you direct. Couple of tools, and we introduced these to you. We're not going to practice this one tonight, but we have in the past. When we talk about the difference between the roles of governance and management, it is helpful to sometimes pull out this governance and management T-chart to say and explore the questions. What are the questions that are coming up around an issue? Does it belong in the governance bucket or the management bucket? And so being able to lay those out to say, okay, many of these fall under the management bucket, therefore the responsibility should be primarily under the management team. So the governance questions are really around why, to what end, and at what cost. And then of course, relating back to your policy role, through what policies? Or do we need to update those policies? Then the management responsibilities are around the what, the when, the how and the who. And so if you find yourself at the board table asking a lot of management questions, which you can do, where does the responsibility lie? I think when we talk about committees, we'll start to differentiate a little around that too. But again, it is helpful to pull this out sometimes, especially if you're at a work session or doing professional development, where saying, we don't, we're not sure where the lines are here. Are we doing management work at the board table? And should we be handing that off to the management team? And then a couple of other tools. And again, you started using Guiding Change, which is practice number four. One of the ways that we're going to discuss the, the board priorities or the topics that you're interested in is through this informal consultation to the superintendent. So you can do it through statements of consultation that are written, but they are really informal. They're the board saying, we know that some of these items may be in the management role, but we really want to consult with the superintendent on what our priorities and interests are. And so we're going to have that informal consultation with the superintendent. So, so that the superintendent can understand what's on our minds, what our opinions are, what we'd like to see happen. And we're going to do that with the, again, the last item that we talked about, which are those interests that you expressed, expressed through the survey. And then, practice number four here, this formal consultation with the board to the superintendent through the Guiding Change framework. Your district has started to use the Guiding Change framework inside the organization on some items, topics, initiatives and projects. It's something that we've practiced with the board, I'm not saying it yet, but we've practiced with the board in the past. And it is a suggestion that we have from Teamworks that you could say, as you look forward to priorities in the coming year, you might identify a few of those priorities by completing a Guiding Change document. As you talk about public engagement and listening sessions, a Guiding Change document might be a great tool to use. Because what it helps you do is it lays out parameters around a change process. So what you do is identify not just the topic, but also what is the question that you're trying to answer here? And then you'll see, too many buttons here, oops, I didn't have the other item there. You have three columns. One column is around why are we even doing this? So it's a number, it's pieces of information around the context for why you would make a change. And then you will also lay out the desired results. So it helps you agree as a board or as a superintendent, if Cory was doing this for cabinet members, to, here's the reason and the numbers may be behind what you're trying to do, what you're trying to do, the results we're hoping to achieve. And then there's a middle column that's all around the unacceptable means. To get from our current context to our desired results, what are we not going to entertain? Number one above that is we're not going to violate laws and policies. That's usually up there. But we have seen sometimes that we are not going to, for example, blame families for what they don't know. Sometimes end up. If you're doing a budget process, in some school districts, some school boards, every year that they do their budget process, they do a Guiding Change document based on the new context. I think your team did this maybe a year or two ago. So, yeah, so a Guiding Change document that can be started with the superintendent or the cabinet, but that the board says, these are some of our priorities, we're going to lay out a Guiding Change document about this in order to make sure that we are in good partnership. It helps you really understand the why. And that context and reality also is a great kind of key messaging tool. It helps you reflect back and say, why didn't we do this in the first place? This is the reason why, that we're moving forward. I am recommending to you, as you think about the, the role of the committees, that you entertain the notion that you might be able to have Guiding Change documents for each of the committees if you decide to evaluate the committees at some point. We have another school board in another district that is completely looking at all of their committees right now. And they're, they're going to have a Guiding Change document for each committee just for the first year, to say, here's what we want, here's the context, here's the desired results, here's the unacceptable means. They have a focus question for each of the committees because they're seeing some redundancies across their committees. They're seeing some committees that have been under the board's auspices and the board members have said, we don't know why it's here or why we're even on these committees. They should be moved over to the management team, but we want that evaluated. And we'll talk about that as we move through.
What I like about this is, when you get your target set, we use it around a number of things. You have, it forces you to have the conversation on what's, how do we get there and what ways are supported in how to get to the outcome we want? And one of the things where, that don't have support are really not acceptable to get to that same outcome. So it forces you to look at that context and reality and what are the variables at play, right? That, it just forces that conversation and surfaces the things that are barriers and you probably end up with a stronger focus on, this is the strongest pathway to the outcome we're trying to get to. And that's helped us.
It's a tool of leadership where it allows a manager, the school board, to say, here are the parameters. I don't need to be in the room because we know there are people who are responsible for coming up with the solutions or the creative means. We talked about your decision-making process where they might bring two or three options to you or not. This can be for small projects and big projects, but allows you to kind of be there without being there. And to stay in your governance role or stay in your management role without getting into the details. And so it is probably our most used framework that we've had at Teamworks these 28 years now. And so I would strongly encourage you to use it when you feel it would be helpful from the board to the management team.
It looks like a great bridge between governance and management and to fulfill operational oversight in our governance role. It's a great tool. Before we move into the survey, are there any other questions from the last few slides?
No, just in terms of timing. If there's work that we're supposed to be doing as a board, you have a hard stop at eight thirty. Just wanted to make sure you do that.
Are we all stepping at eight thirty or nine o'clock?
You don't have to as long as you-
Okay, you need to be done at eight thirty. All right, so a little bit more about the survey then. And I kept this one by itself because there are so many items here, but this is consistent with what we've asked before. So is, the top one is, ours is a high functioning school board. So again, green and blue are, green is agree strongly, blue is agree somewhat, yellow is disagree somewhat, and orange is disagree strongly, gray is I'm not sure. So top is that you have a high functioning school board, that you conduct your business essentially professionally, that you have a shared understanding of the work. Let's see, all members of the school board, I think, are operating, kind of moving in the same direction. Down to you all have, you have clear expectations for, the board is one of them and you have clear expectations for administration. There are a number of clear expectations that I should have made sure are clear. I'm going to pull this out. Let me pull the specific items here for you. It's on the next slide, Christine. Here we go. So that you can see this aligns nicely. It's the numbers versus the bar graph. So these are your responses this time, that you have a high functioning school board that mostly operates within your governance role. Looks like you're kind of split there. So you can see it's half and half, that you have a high functioning school board, that you conduct your business according to the open meeting law. You do have agreement there, that you have shared understanding for your engagement responsibilities. Some mixed results there, some disagreement, that all members of the school board maintain confidentiality. Looks like you have most agreement there with, going to be disagreeing somewhat, that all board members publicly support the decision of the school board once the decision has been made. Some disagreement there. Clear expectations for communication among the board. Clear expectations for communication between the board members and members of the community. That's stronger there. That's still some disagreement. Clear expectations for communication between board members and the superintendent. Again, that one has been strong these last couple of years. And clear expectations for communication between board members and district administrators. So there's some unknown- So there's some unknowns there on the fourth bullet, fifth bullet, and that you still have clear expectations for the superintendent. That's still strong. So some room for growth in some of these areas, primarily among that you have shared understanding for public engagement responsibility, communication and expectations among the board members, which I know is one of the items that your chair and vice chair are working on this year. You can see some of that shift over time. So here is a picture, a little hard to see, but I wanted you to compare last year's board survey to this year's board survey. There is growth. So even though there was orange and yellow in this year's survey, you have more blue and green this year, so you have made that positive movement in the correct direction. Sometimes it can be disheartening to look at these things, but as you see progress over time, you need to celebrate that, understanding that you have different board members. Then I wanted to show you the same item from 2021, which I thought was striking. So in this sense, it's helpful to see the shift over time, and you can see that there has been a big shift in many of these areas from 2021. So you've put in the work. It's not perfect yet by any means, and you're moving in the right direction. This gives us an indication of the areas we could be focusing on for professional development. And I'm looking right across the table at the chair and vice chair to say, and then your new superintendent and outgoing superintendent to say, these are some areas that we might want to focus on as we do your development work together. Again, help to see the progress over time as your consultant. It is a relief to see it from others every day. All right, so we're going to move on to the kind of second hour of our work in just a minute here. Would you like to take a quick break? Anyone need a break? Keep moving? Okay. Maybe? Okay. So the next topic then is going to be around workflow and getting into the work of the committees. So I'm just going to do a quote, suggest that you pull out your packet so that you can read this probably a little bit more easily in your packet on page two and three, and then the four and five is what we're going to be moving into here. So quick, high level, and you already have your board structure set, but again, just a quick overview on board structure and workflow. So you have your different kinds of meetings and sessions as a board. You have committee meetings, like your policy committee, which are informal or tend to be more informal. They inform some of your learning sessions. That's what this is, a work session. And that gives you the opportunity to discuss and learn and debate with each other prior to taking action at a more formal board action meeting. That's your business meeting. So different school boards call them different things. You call it a work session that we're in now. Some school boards call them study sessions. Some school boards do not have study sessions or learning sessions at all, and it can create difficulty at that business meeting or that formal meeting. Because then you start having debates and a lot of discussion, and your business meetings can get pretty lengthy and pretty hot. And we have been working with some school boards that have reinstituted these learning sessions so that they have time to get in depth and ask the questions and talk about things like implementation in a bit more detail. The difficulty with that, that we've heard from some boards, is if people are only tuning in to the formal business meeting, they don't see the debate that has occurred and the decision-making that has gone into that. The answer that some school boards have to that is to say, do a quick recap. We debated this at two work sessions. The work sessions are open to the public. We had the debates. Here are some of the positions that were shared, and now are ready to work. Because we know that that is some of what we hear from our constituency. So the intention here is to have that flow from your board committee meetings, the committees of the board, to the learning sessions, to the action meetings. And you do that now. You've had work sessions in place.
Did you have work sessions in place all the time, Cory?
They were well before I ever.
Okay, so you've always had them established.
It looked different because of context.
Yeah. They used to always look like this.
And then COVID.
Yeah.
And how you structure them, I mean, so that you can delve deeply into the topics that are of most interest. You have limited time as a board. You have those formal meetings where you take action, and many boards have a time, certain time for those meetings, five to eight, and they end them, and they're efficient about them. And then you have also limited time, so which are the topics that you really want to cover at your work sessions? We're going to talk about committee meetings in a minute here, but. So this is a structure and workflow that you follow well. Some school boards do not follow this structure, like I said, that they've eliminated or never had work sessions or learning sessions, and find them to be useful. Any questions, comments, ideas from the structures that you already have in place or related to the high overview of structure and workflow?
I just want to say, I think it's been really helpful when board members, when we make comments before taking a vote, and board members say, in our last work session, we discussed. I think that's made a big difference in the perception of rubber stamping. I haven't been hearing that as frequently since we've started implementing that type of language. So I just wanted to share that.
You know, another way to kind of conceptually think about it, so I think St. Paul Plaza Committee of the Hall for work sessions, it's almost kind of like, this is a committee bringing, that must be all members are there, bringing something forward to the board to vote on. Or a policy committee, and it's a smaller committee, right? So it just is conceptually a way to think about it.
And in St. Paul, they actually vote to forward it officially for action from the committee of the hall. Some boards don't. They stick with discussion, and there's a general consensus, but there's, it's not a formal action to forward it to the board.
One thing that Dr. Kate McGuire used to do was she would go around to each board member and ask if that board member feels comfortable moving forward to the, so it's not, you're not necessarily voting because you don't vote in a work session, but that was actually really helpful because sometimes you would have three or four board members say, no, we're not. We'd have to do another work session on it, rather than getting to a vote and having everyone vote no on something, which is more catastrophic than just having another work session.
So to know and understand, does a board need more information in order to move forward?
Yeah.
Some board members may not change their mind.
That was, that was part of the question. Do you have all the information that you need to act? And are you comfortable with this being brought forward? Because we did have the situation where board members would say, yes, they have all the information, then it would get to vote, and then they'd vote no. And that would be a surprise.
Probably blind sided.
Right. Yeah, and that was not good either.
Yeah, so having an understanding of the direction until the board.
Yeah.
I feel like in the last few months, we're getting back to a better rhythm with your feedback about the overall process like this, but then how to be more efficient in those spaces, right? So you're giving some good feedback about, you know, give us more things to read before the meeting, be more concise at the meeting. Those are the, how do we be more efficient piece? But trying to, you know, come to that work session and that has helped you be more effective at the business meetings, right? And we've had to shift since, just in my short time here, how we do work sessions on a number of different ways, mainly because of the pandemic and how we are. So I feel like we're getting back to a more collaborative process with the cabinet, too, having them at the table with you and building that relationship with them. We haven't arrived yet. I think, you know, you'll get there now that we're, your feedback, you know, we keep tweaking it. So I've been pleased with the way it's trending, right? And I think they're well worth spending the time so that when you get to that business meeting, you're pretty clear, you've given us generally the feedback we need, you know, we try not to bring things to you unless we have to. Otherwise, we're going to bring things to you that, you know, we don't support. So I think this overall has been a good, I can't imagine not doing work sessions in the district because, boy, that makes for some tough, and you're there to vote without the background knowledge. That's really tough.
And your business meetings can get really long if you don't have those work sessions to be able to follow that.
But I think you'll continue to dial in how you want your work sessions to flow and function. That'll only make you more effective at the meeting.
Just observationally, I think this group's been really good about sharing out in terms of questions or concerns in the work session. And that hasn't, I haven't really seen that, you know, play out in a problematic way at all in the business meetings. It really has been. And I recognize COVID has done some, did some things in terms of how we operated, but it was certainly at work.
Well, I just add, this board has demonstrated your willingness to lean into that ways-of-working conversation. It's uncomfortable, even sometimes painful, right? But you've been willing to go there. Just like you said, any relationship, you have to invest in it, and it can be painful. But as a group, you've really shown the willingness to go there and push through the pain, and there's been lots of good times, too. But that, how you operate as a member of six, a group of six, has been, you've been at it, remember when we were doing that every month for a while? We were literally working really hard at it, you know?
And we did those remote.
We did.
What's not up here, but what many boards have talked about over time and what switched during COVID is, so these are the formal structure and workflow. There are also opportunities, of course, for professional development, which would be considered informal, but part of an expectation of being able to work at a high level. Many school boards have also talked about, especially board members who have been around a while, have talked about the fact that it's helpful to get together to know each other. So understanding that you have to post that, but having each other over, having social opportunities to get to know each other can help you understand each other as board members, even if you have differences. So that's something that many school boards have talked about that is helpful in terms of having an understanding and a good working relationship. I am not expecting you to have that. I'm just sharing what school board members have said has switched over time, changed over time, to the detriment of how the school board functions, in the opinion of some school board members. Sharing with you, and I understand, I think you used to occasionally get together sometimes.
We adjusted. Yeah. And we have events that are in the public that we invite one another to, and so I think there's been, we're getting in another, a good rhythm.
Just don't discuss school board business and make mistakes.
Never do.
Okay. Keep us moving. And now, so I just, in your packet are the items that are up on this one slide here. What I did is I took your committees and work structures, and Cory, I think, has copies.
I'm going to give you, so you have something to reference. It's a copy of the descriptions and then the assignments, just so you can look if you need them.
So Sherry sent to me the descriptions for your committees, your joint boards, and then, yep, and your school board members' representatives on those. So as we've worked with different school boards, we've started to articulate, so which of these committees fall under the responsibility and kind of consult to the board or our board committee, which ones are a committee of the management team and provide recommendations and consultation to the management team? And in reviewing this document here, the description, it looks like they're all together. And so my suggestion is that we start to differentiate between what is a board committee, what is a management, we call them councils at Teamworks, but they're committees and committees. So I'm going to call them a governance kind of board committee and a management committee. And then there's a task force that can be a task force of the board or the management team, and that's a time-certain task force. It is not an ongoing task force. So what I've attempted to do for you in your packet is to begin to differentiate from our perspective at Teamworks, the, what is a committee of the board? What would we, from our perspective and my understanding of what these committees are, fall under a management council or management committee? And then I pulled out separately a board liaison role or appointment to a partner organization. So that we're starting to differentiate those roles, and this is what we see again, working with other school boards. I'm going to start with the board liaison role. So those are appointments that either you make as board members to an organization of which you are a member, like AMSD, or which you, you're a member and you pay fees to, like intermediate District 287. That is, you actually have a board member who is appointed as a board member on that school board. And then you have these other organizations that you partner with, but they do not provide direct recommendations to you as a full school board that comes to your board table. Does that make sense? So they are partner organizations. You may adopt some of what they're suggesting. You may recommend to them or join a platform, but they are not a committee of the board bringing information directly to you. And so that's why I started to differentiate that.
The only nuance is 287 and Northwest Suburban, you are reps there on a board making decisions for the district and all the member districts. A little bit similarly with the BBA, right? So AMSD is definitely different, and I think the foundation's kind of got a little different than those other three.
Yeah, on the foundation, I don't have voting rights. On the BBA, I do.
Yeah. So there's three here that literally we have a rep who's voting with other members of other districts.
As a representative.
Of this board.
Of our district. District 287, even though you're appointed by this board, you are a separate board member with separate legal responsibilities. That's, those intermediates have a different interesting function. So you're technically supposed to be voting on behalf of 287, not with Osseo's interest in mind.
Well, kind of both.
Yeah, it's kind of both.
So again, I just pulled those out because they are not committees that kind of report up to you. They might not be bringing information directly to you in any of your board meetings. You might be bringing it as a liaison. So that's where I started to differentiate here. And I'm going to pull up, I have a Google document for the next set of committees, because what I want to do is just talk you through this a little bit. So as we think about the structure of your committees, we're not going to be able to get into every single committee, nor do we want to because you have administrators who are overseeing, and chairs can be scrapped.
Well, that's what, I guess, we're going to ask all of you, and it may not be tonight. If you have a desire to take this, these descriptions and go deeper into these, then that would be a separate session with that in mind, to really dig deeper into what these all mean.
I would like to have a separate session where we go deeper into those, but with the department heads that are heading them up.
Yeah. Talked about that a little bit.
Tonight, what we were thinking is, again, beginning the conversation, starting to see where we land in terms of agreement. Do you consider to have these committees be a committee of the board, or do they belong as a committee of the management team? That doesn't mean that the information can't flow up to the board as a report in some way, but I understand from Cory that there's sometimes some confusion about what to do with the recommendations.
Yeah, and I think even clarity once we determine this with the committees, because when the committees come and speak to us, I think, you know, and we're, if those initiatives or recommendations aren't implemented, there's some question, like, we brought this to you as the board versus bringing it to the superintendent. So I think maybe there's some practical functionality there in how we interact, how we work, what, how we think what recommendations are brought forward.
And even the role of board members on committees. So again, we get into the discussion on the law sometimes requires that a board member be on a committee that may be in conflict from our perspective of your governance role. Because if there is a recommendation coming from a committee to the board table, that's a board member as a member of a committee. that's a board member as a member of a committee making a recommendation for what they will eventually vote on as a board member. So that could be, from our perspective, a bit of a conflict. Or you may be influencing the committee's recommendation to the table that you are gonna be the final decision or choice maker on. So we have had some school boards say, we do not want to be in that position. If by law, we need to, and keep going back to him because he's your law guy. If by law, we're required to be on this committee, we're gonna be there as ex officio members. We're not gonna vote, we're gonna be liaisons, we're gonna be there, we're gonna report back to the board, but our role is to, as much as possible, not influence what you all, as representatives, who hopefully have been carefully chosen, will be recommending to the superintendent of the board later. So have some interesting conversations around this with board members. We've had some school boards say, great, I don't have to be on this calendar committee, for example. I don't know why we were on it in the first place. I'm fine to put that back on the management team, and then when the calendar comes to us, I'll make a vote and make an informed decision.
I think some committees are more in consultation, you're giving input as we're developing the work in an ongoing fashion. Others come with very specific recommendations. And the reality is, if we put every one of those recommendations into our operational plan every year, it's too many. So we're getting to a spot now developmentally as a group, as a board and administration, on what's our mechanism to elevate the district high priority initiatives? Because even, you've all heard, even the 28 that are on this year's, we bit off a lot this year. And our staff are over capacity right now. Usually you want five to 10, really high level, like, these are the highest of the highest priorities, right? And then you got some things in department plans. So we're still working through that process and refining, because there's still confusion. You know, where do those recommendations go? How are they prioritized? Where do they show up in an operational plan? Where's the commitment to them, right? So, this was the first year we even had some tools to help us sort that out.
Now that we have those tools, does that provide an opportunity to work with our committees differently? So if there's learning work coming, does that naturally fit in to a committee to evaluate that, provide feedback on it? At what point in the work, as it moves through our cycle, should committees be utilized and aligned with a strategic plan versus coming up with their own initiatives or exploratory work to go into it? So where is the line for something new to come out of a committee versus evaluate what's already been identified?
And we thought, well, starting with you first.
Yes.
So, like, where you land on these will drive, how do we structure out the mechanism for those things year over year to make its way into the, you know, one-year and three-year operational plans? Some of the initiatives take multiple years, some are one, right? So we're in a much better spot than we were last year and in the past. So now, now we have a new problem to solve, which is a good development. We're at the next level of solving this. And so I think we're back to getting clarity on the purpose of the committees. What's consultation with management, what are board? Because I can think of a shorter list that come to the board and give recommendations, those other committees that don't. And that's the inconsistency we gotta figure out.
Well, I feel like some of the concerns that I have around committees are, oftentimes, there's overlap in the work that's being done. And I think that's really difficult for our administrative staff, who's having to go and present at all these different committee meetings, it's taking up a lot of their time, for one thing.
Maybe in different direction on the same thing.
Exactly, yes, and that's a concern. And one thing I hear about a lot is, where are the community members? Most of our committees are primarily comprised of staff and board members, even though they're supposed to have a community element. And many of our staff members are also community members, so they're kind of filling a double role. But I think part of the problem is, we have too many committees, so we can't fill them with all the community members that are willing and able to participate. If we could kind of figure out which community, or which committees are doing what work, and can we combine some of them to, you know, maybe expand the scope of one committee and absolve another, so we can have more participation, especially more equitable participation? Because I feel like sometimes, I mean, I've been in committee meetings where there was like one or two community members.
This year's been harder than most to get, get public buy disparticipation. I don't know what it is.
Oh, yeah.
Could be a lot of reasons, but we just, we've really tried hard to market and recruit, and it's not been as fruitful as we wanted. So we keep thinking how we do a better job of that.
Well, most of the.
Make sure you're a representative.
From my personal experience of people, I've been on DPAC for a long time. Almost all of the community members that I know that have been on DPAC have gotten to be on DPAC because a principal at their site said, hey, I think you'd be a good fit for this. Maybe they're on the PTO or PTA or whatever, but they were personally invited by somebody from their building.
And we have more people than that, more people than normal this year being invited in that fashion, but I can't, or I just won't.
Yeah, too overwhelmed.
Yeah.
And the other piece about committees, now there's the committees of the board that are comprised of board members, either primarily or mostly. So policy committee, I think your legislative action committee. This property committee, Cory said, is, doesn't meet all that often?
Only if we're buying property.
We need to.
And are there any other committees of the board? So in your packet, you'll see that, you know, there is often an executive committee. I would argue that your chair, vice chair is your executive committee. And they meet about once a week with the superintendent roughly. Is that fair? And we need to?
The legislative action committee is listed under advisory committees, not board committees. And it's only got Tanya.
Oh, on this?
The legislative.
Is that right?
And me.
Oh, you're, you too, okay.
So that is not a committee of all the board members, that is a?
Right, two.
Oh, it does say you, sorry.
So is that?
Originally, I wasn't on there.
Okay.
But the board chair is supposed to be on it?
Got it.
Because I needed another committee.
Sure you did.
And then, so you have, so there would typically be some kind of facilities or finance committee, often comprised of many community members. Sort of a proving ground to potentially become a board member. So you're always looking for good candidates for people who understand what's happening in the district. A finance committee is often a good way to get people introduced to what's happening with the district. So which of your committees would be your finance committee?
You're describing fiscal, but you're also describing ECMAC with the facilities piece that you talked about.
ECMAC meets more frequently than fiscal, right?
Yeah, fiscal ends only quarterly.
I haven't been in it.
Or maybe it's like on a sequence of six times a year or something like that.
Can give you another example, so REMAC, Risk Emergency Management Advisory Council, doesn't have board reps.
Right.
Neither does our special advisory committee, which, that is actually required by statute to have that committee. It requires.
We're required to have it, but not required to have a board member?
Right. It actually, that one requires 50% parents. There's unique statutory language around that one. Special advisory.
Oh, yeah, and you're.
In most districts, there aren't board members assigned to it. They often might rotate, there's different ways of doing it, right?
AIPAC.
So those are differences.
But AIPAC reports, provides a report directly that needs.
Concurrent.
Yeah, so I guess I view that almost as elevated over to the board side because of that unique role. No? Because I know, so you've defined it by, if it includes all of the board members, that's a committee. But at the same time, there's certain committees that have legislatively defined parameters that might elevate it above an average committee.
So maybe there's a fourth column?
I don't, I'm just like pointing out that that's one that feels a little different with the concurrents of what we do.
The community ed, I think that is a requirement by law as well, that there's some kind of community ed, committee or council.
DPAC's required by law too.
Yeah. So there are some requirements that there be a board member, like I said. What we differentiate is, what's the, what's the umbrella? Is it primarily, even though there may be board members on it, a management committee? And it's going to flow through the superintendent's office in terms of recommendations? Or is it primarily a consultative body to the school board? In which case, then they formally come to the school board. We want to address that confusion around roles. If I'm on a committee and I'm bringing recommendations directly to the school board, to Tanya's point, where does the operational plan fit? So you have your administrators that are the liaison or the chair that kind of oversee the committees, even if they are, except for the policy committee, that oversee that work. So what flows to the committee and what flows from the committee? And what is their decision-making authority in terms of what they bring to the board? Do you need to set up some more structure around what those recommendations need to pertain to? Rather than opening up lots of new initiatives that may or may not make it onto an operational plan?
Yeah, on that note, I would actually suggest that KAIAC, the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee, be one of those committees that reports out to the board, because the investment that the board approves in order to move through the process with those recommendations, I mean, it's a lot of money involved there, and if only one or two board members are a part of it, then the other board members don't really, you know, they're not getting a report out from KAIAC saying, this is the curriculum that we're recommending and this is why. And that's kind of a big part of our responsibility, and it's a huge amount of our budget.
And the curriculum and responsibility and instructional role usually falls, though, under the management team and under the management responsibility. And so the question is, do you have your, you have a curriculum review cycle, yes, here, I do know that. And so is it part of your regular cycle that you do bring that information to the board, to report to the board when the cycle is coming and why you're recommending certain curriculum? Because you do oversee the budget, that's really what you make the decision on, right? Is approving the budget for the curriculum.
To purchase the curriculum and to move forward with it. But I think there's, the other aspect of it is the accountability to our students. A lot of times, when we implement a new curriculum, before we had KAIAC, there would be a pilot, but the board wasn't really apprised of the situation or where it was being piloted in an in-depth way or what was being piloted, because there wasn't KAIAC. So we didn't even have any idea, like, what curriculums were being explored or why. And then they would say, okay, we piloted these, this is the one that everybody likes best. Here's the reasons why it's the best, we'd like you to approve it, it's a board's, you can purchase it. Then we purchase it, we implement it, and all of a sudden, everybody's like, you know, up in arms, community-wise. Or even teachers, like, having to learn something new, change is always difficult, things like that. So we have to be accountable to those people whenever we make those kinds of changes. And if we don't have any kind of idea about how those decisions got made, that's, for me, I think that's kind of an issue.
Wouldn't that be something, I'm sorry.
I think I just feel like you, we, I think we've already established that we have some sort of follow-up discussion and walk through each of the committees, and I feel like part of that work should be determining what the reporting timeline is, or, you know, do they need to present a report to the board at the end of the year? Quarterly, whatever that is, I think that's, I think where we should be specific about our expectations on that. I don't think that necessarily needs to move from a management column to a board column, but we can set an expectation that they report to the board at the end of the year.
That's what I'm trying to get at, yeah, is that we determine which ones report to the whole board.
So knowing that our time is limited and we want to have this discussion, should we continue talking about committees, or knowing that Thomas is, I do want to maximize Thomas's time and some of our other agenda items too?
So what I would, I know we want to get to the topics, and we will by eight o'clock one way or another. One of the questions I'd love for you to think about and maybe get a top-level response from each of you is, as you look at how I've suggested that you differentiate between these, and Cory has given you just a couple more committees that we would add to this. Having KAIAC, DPAC, ECMAC, fiscal, RISE, that placement under that management role, would you generally agree that that's where they belong and that that work kind of flows up through the superintendent's office? And then that separate question that Thomas was just referencing and that Heather was trying to get to is, maybe not necessarily having the school board in your governance role be highly involved in these committees, but having some way and some expectation about what information comes up to the board from the superintendent about the committees. Obviously, there are times when you're gonna get more questions about things like curriculum. Some curricula generates more interest than others. So what is the information that needs to come up and through the superintendent to the school board as an information item? So that you feel like you have the information you need before a budget decision is made. But, so that's really around, what are your thoughts? I'm differentiating between these committees that report up into the board and those that report up and through the superintendent. So if I could get a sense from you about, would you feel that it's fair to differentiate between the two?
Can I make just one additional distinction? And it can matter, it actually came up in an ECMAC meeting we had, and the question was whether or not it was an administrative committee or it was a committee of the board. Well, it's a committee of the board, and the open meeting law comes into play, and you have to think about implications there. And in that particular meeting, I think that, this was back when Patricia was with us still, there was a desire for those community members to be able to speak and open up and share some information. They were very invested in this, and there was some desire for people to come into the meeting who hadn't been involved and interject and influence that. And so thinking about it, at least in those terms, about sometimes when you get a community member involved, maybe they don't want to have, maybe they want to be able to share, but they don't necessarily want everything that comes with that. So transparency is great, but also when you're thinking about setting up committees and whether they're committees of the board or committees of administrative committees, that's an important distinction.
And one thing I would add is, in a number of districts, the theory is, especially these that are advisory with community members, they're advising the administration that's running the meeting, the committees. So you're getting community input on the work. And the leaders of that committee, whether it's a cabinet member, like, I'm thinking of Robbins in DPAC, right? So it might be a director. They're gathering that input from the community, and then they're taking that either directly back to the cabinet or the administration or the, maybe the, I wrote down, like, the admin team of the cabinet, which then, you know, through the work of the cabinet superintendent, comes to the board as you're then deciding, what are the highest level priorities for each year? Because not, again, not every item can make it there, there's too many things. Now, some things might land in the right spot at a department level. Because there's added things at a department level that's, you know, you've been on DPAC a long time. There's lots of things covered there, but don't always end up on the highest priority items district-wide, right? If that makes sense. So board members then have been a part of that to help just give guidance and be informed. So when you can go to the board meeting, you got at least somebody on the board who's tuned into the work and can report back. You guys have been doing a really nice job of, here's the work we're doing in that committee. And it gives the other board members a sense of, okay, we all can't be in every committee, so we're gonna divide it up. And you're just, you're there, learning, supporting, not deciding, but just being informed so that at least there's someone on the board that's deep, has deeper knowledge than the rest of the members of the board. So that's generally how it's worked. It gets harder when it's like, a committee's got a direct pipeline to the sixth if you kind of leapfrogging, you know, the administrative work around what, we got this many priorities. How do we get, we only got so much money, we can't do it all. And some things take multiple years. So this, you know, prioritization that has to happen, and you rely on us to do that. For you, you set, you set the course, and then we come back and say, here's, here's that work. So I think that's what's kind of, maybe over time, that focus could have been shifted or changed in some of you've been here longer than others. Just sort of getting re-grounded in it, and maybe it does come back to just re, getting a new understanding of what these are intended to do. So if Robbins was here, she'd say, well, here's what DPAC's intended to do. And you might say, yeah, or things have changed, you know, we want to go something different. You know, traditionally in this district, a purchase of a curriculum hasn't come to you for approval or not. You've approved the board, and then we've informed you of the process and.
It's been inconsistent. I think we, there were times when we approved it.
Yeah.
And times we haven't.
Well, that's what we gotta clean up then, right? And when should it and when shouldn't it?
There's a, there's another process that some school boards use, is that you accept what the committee has shared with you, but you're not making any commitment to what they've recommended. That we've accepted your report. That we've accepted your report and we're handing it to the administrative team to determine how and if it fits with the operational plan. Ideally, you would want that committee to not have spent a lot of time on something that's not going to be able to move through, so that gets to the expectations.
I feel like that's a little bit of a conflict sometimes, though, when they're mostly comprised of administrators, right? They're making the recommendations, they're doing all the work, they're bringing it to us, and then for us to say, okay, great, thanks, now you go.
Well, you do give guidance, though, you give feedback, and you kind of, in your own kind of ways, say we support it or not, with your feedback, especially work sessions, you ask questions, and we get pretty clearly whether you're behind it or not.
I'm wondering if committees that we report out at board meetings about, if that's a differentiating factor in your question of the different roles, if that matters or not? Because there are some committees where board members are a part of, and we report out at our general meetings.
And there isn't.
How, yeah, how it went or what work is being done, just to give the other board members in the community an update on the progress. So I don't know, but...
Well, here's what I'm hearing, and then I have a suggestion. One is that you'd like to address, what are the specific roles of the committee members and the committees? That's roles and purpose. Which way do they report? Do they report directly to the school board or up through the superintendent and make a recommendation on how that reporting structure works? How does the work of any of the committees fit within the operational plan and the strategic plan, up and down? What's the expectation around the information flow? So even if they aren't reporting up directly to the school board, it sounds like some of you would like to have some regular information updates, whether it's through a liaison board member or another way. And then, I know this was something, I think Cory may have mentioned to me, and some of you individually have said on your comments, is, how do you make sure that you have the kind of representation you want on some of these committees? And I think Heather, you were kind of referencing that, too. Do we have one or two committees where we want more community members represented on the committees as well? And that might get to some of your engagement desire. So those are some of the things I'm hearing.
Well, can I give you one good example? ECHMAC, so in the purpose, I think that's where it should be clear. And some of these aren't clear enough. ECHMAC's clear right at the end. "ECHMAC will analyze information affecting enrollment capacity building use and generate observations and recommendations to be communicated to district administration." That's going to fall on John and his team, but then come to you as the board through me, right? And you, I'm looking at Tanya, because you've been on it a lot lately, so...
Yeah, that's a tight ship.
Yeah.
They're very clear every meeting.
Yeah, and that's a good example. It's not right to the board, it's to district administration. We're kind of making decisions on what to bring to you as far as what we can afford, you know, all those things, right? So maybe there's some clarity that can be gained in each committee, who does it, does it come right to the board, does it come through district administration? I just think most of them do, because then we're, as a cabinet, looking at all those recommendations and through informal consultation with all of you, prioritizing, where do you want, what do you want to see, you're giving us direction, what you want to get to the top of that list, maybe some things can still get done through department work. That has to happen, otherwise we'll be a mile wide and an inch deep on a lot of things, right?
So...
So as I read some of these, it's clear, and I read some of these others, and it's, who does it go to, right? So, yeah, jump in.
I just wanted, my two assignments, but we have to go back to the legislative ones, it's got to be that, because we have to do DEPAC, we have to, that's what comes to the school board, so we got to make sure that's separate from...
Yeah.
And I get muddled with all the rest of them, right? So, yeah.
But I also, and when we come through this, I want to make sure that we're not putting the same expectations on all the committees that we might have of, like, DEPAC, for example, who does a big form of report, you know, at the end of the year. Some of these may just be, they may spend a lot of time learning throughout the year, might be a lot of listening sessions, I mean, it's, I think the needs in these are going to vary from year to year, and I think we need to be flexible enough in that, too.
Yeah, there could be many that their role is whoever's leading that committee, that cabinet member, that's the point of contact, that's the information they're bringing them forward, yeah.
So it sounds like you'd like to see some tightening, some differentiation, maybe some recommendations, identify the ones that are required by law, so that it's really clear in where school board members are required to be representatives. I would say, I think another conversation will be, what is the role of the school board members on those committees again? We've had those discussions elsewhere again, so are you a liaison or are you influencing the discussion? So I would strongly recommend, we could even put together a guiding change document just around the committees, largely speaking, so that we can address what are some of the areas of confusion and the information that we have to move forward with. And then as I look to your superintendent, in the future superintendent, maybe we can work with some of your cabinet members on coming up with a recommendation.
You set the course on this in January, every year, right? So you actually take action on it as an action item on the structure of the committees. So in theory, if you needed the time, you have time to rethink, but you want to do it. You can always take new action at school sooner, but that's the part of that organizational meeting in January.
And we can certainly work with Cory to just come up with a suggestion, maybe a quick reorganizing of how you have your committees right now, so that it will be easy to say, well, what do we want to do with the committees, and what do we want to do the other way?
And we can share that back for feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Go through a couple iterations of it if we need to, right?
So I think we have a sense of some of what you'd like, the loops you'd like closed, some areas you'd like worked on, and some clarity around some of the structure and purpose. Good? Okay. All right, and I know we want to keep moving. Do you want to take a quick break at all? Nope.
Break yourself in the ear. Care of yourself as you need to.
Sorry, my freezer. When you got to go, you...
Anyone else want water, hold on?
Okay, so our final item, and I'm sorry that you have to wait, Thomas, in half an hour, is this informal consultation of the superintendent that I referenced earlier. So when we talked about these topics of interest, my words, not yours, priorities of the board, I had asked you in the survey, what are these areas that you would like to consider for exploration with the operational plan or the district administrative team and have them pursue? So again, our words, not theirs, and decided on, this is an opportunity to talk about this. So you have the operational plan, that is, the implementation plan of the, all the initiatives in the district that Cory has mentioned a couple of times now. And you have 28 initiatives that your team is trying to implement and stage over that three-year operational plan. And you have these topics that you are interested in as individual board members. Sometimes they come up in discussions, but what we wanted to do was tease out specifically, what are the topics that you're interested in? How do we prioritize them? And in talking with Cory, also wanted to identify for you, and what's identified in purple, are topics that you've said you're interested in as board members, but that are somehow already in process?
Or related to an existing item. This is the current, what I just handed out is our current operational plan, that we will begin now here soon, very soon, to be thinking about what's going to potentially move from learning work to implementation, what things in implementation that we're doing stay there or move off into standard work. Some of them are year, multiple-year initiatives. As we think about, are there new learning work items that'll come in on this left-hand side for next year? And as I've been, the last couple of weeks, you know, checking again, checking in on the work here, this, we did a lot, here, we said that, I remember, August, we were in Rice Lake, we were like, this was ambitious. But these were a lot of things we had to, felt we had to tackle. So that's just the context, as we begin to think about, do things stay in learning work? Are they ready to move to implementation, same with that same little column, do they stay there or do they move off? And we'll be moving into a process to figure out how far along we are on each one of these items. So hopefully that's added a little context to... As you're looking at your interests and thinking about new learning work, because a lot of times, the best one I can think of right now is school start times. That could be a learning work where you're going to need a community task force, probably taking a solid year to really think and study that, come with recommendations. Once we've landed on, and also be thinking about that referendum piece that could be out in front of you with facilities. So timing's critical, too, when you tackle some new things. Some will take longer than others, when I look at the list here. Yeah.
So what I did was, I condensed, some of you in, use different phrasing or slightly different phrasing, but you can see where it says times two, four, three, that's where it was mentioned a number of times in the survey by board members. The items in purple then, as Cory just mentioned, are either already somehow accounted for in the operational plan, it might be as part of learning work, or it's on your schedule for curriculum adoption. And so wanted to get a sense from you on these topic areas, have a discussion around them, and then I, if we need to, we can do some prioritization, because I love sticky dots, there are sticky dots at each of your places.
That would be good.
We have a poster here where we could identify high priority areas for you.
That would help me, so as our team begins to meet and thinking of next year, if I have clarity from you, these are the ones that rise to the top, we start redesigning this column, what's the learning work for next year, as Kim comes in, with this context in mind, that would be helpful.
So it makes sense to me, and tell me if I'm misreading this, if it's in purple, we're already doing it, so just...
If it's in purple, it is...
That wouldn't be one of our top priorities of new learning, right? We're looking for new learning, or...
I'm reluctant to say we're already doing it, it's at least related or connected to an existing initiative, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable saying that, but you might have a different thought in mind.
So what comes to mind for me is if we're already doing it, what's the gap with it kind of coming up from a board perspective, especially if it's multiple times? So is what we're doing misaligned with what the board understood its direction provided or what it represented?
That's a good way to put it.
So I probably would concur that we might not vote on those, but better say, like, what is it about what we're doing that's not quite aligned with expectations?
Or it's on the plan, that doesn't mean we're implementing it quite yet.
Right. Is it the desire of the board to have it move forward more quickly, which may or may not...
Well, that's what I was going to say. In my survey, I know for myself that some of the things that I put were things that I knew we were already doing, but I feel have a critical need to move at a faster pace.
And I'll just advise, as much as I share that with you, I want to talk to teams who are like, we're going as fast as we can go, so then, how do we find efficiencies? Like, can we work smarter, harder on certain things?
Or take other things off their plate.
Sometimes we do need to go slow, make sure we're involving as many critical voices as we can, you know? So there's this balance of patience and urgency, right? We're hungry for faster results.
And resources.
Yeah. Oh, there's that, too, yeah. What's coming, yeah.
Training in front of them, are those like board training, or are they teacher training? Like, who's the, who's getting trained? Do we, was there any context around that?
This was simply the list, right? And so why don't we start with the items in purple? It was helpful for me to hear from Cory, which of these items, where they are at in terms of how they're being addressed by the administrative team already. So parent and family engagement was mentioned a few different ways. One was to build trust within the district, some were around having parent education for families. And so you do have parent and family engagement, Cory, you were saying it's already on the operational plan?
Well, part of it, you know, we have our face plan, year two this year, I would guess, there's a year three. Sometimes the family pieces also touch other items, so, like, recently, you saw Kay talking about how we're building trust with families through communication plans and at the sites and so forth. So I share, kind of, to Tanya, your point, I'm not super clear on the language, what the intention was, as you entered this in. You might be thinking one thing, and I'm reading it thinking another thing, right? But we at least started with, well, you know, the mental health stuff, that ties to our MTSS, continuum of comprehensive supports and services. When we did that presentation last spring, we layered in everything up to clinical therapeutic mental health and the continuum of service there that we're trying to build. So that's one example. It doesn't have the same language, it's different language, but I think it was intended to be the same.
Superintendent, I could tell you may also want to take in, there are maybe several mandates that come with the money you made from the legislature, so...
Well, and just so you, board members, thank you for saying that.
You're welcome.
Because right now, the cost out of all the policy is significantly larger than the highest projected funding allocation. So even if we landed at five and five and 50% of it were in the formula, there's millions of dollars more in the policy mandates that are coming without any new dollars. So we've been communicating that to our legislators, because you can't use any money towards negotiations. You have nothing left, because it's, now has to go towards implementation of new mandates. So we're, every AMSD district is actually costing out, we should have our numbers soon. It's, I think, that was an unintended piece. So we're really not sure what we have to work with until some of those policy things get really narrowed down. You know, we saw one on class size requirements, we don't have the facilities to double up our classrooms. We would love 17 in a classroom, but that takes twice as many classes in these buildings that we don't have, for example. So we're telling that story. That's just one.
Not to mention the workforce issues.
Yeah, $25 an hour unemployment benefits, those are all things we want, but that's going to cost...
Double the terms, double the buildings.
Insurance. Yeah, so there's, those are the things we're kind of working through that I think your point is, be thoughtful and cautious, because we don't know what's going to come at us, like it or not, we have to do it.
Particularly the literacy work they may be mandating, it's going to come down, it will impact their work.
Yeah. I probably just muddied the water, and I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, sorry.
I think there's a lot happening at the legislature, we don't know what's going to be required of us. So I think your, the thoughtfulness of being as simple as we can moving forward is probably wise.
So I think one of the things we can do here, the idea, was to bring out the topics that you as board members were interested in. And so are they landing somewhere? Maybe there wasn't an understanding that it is in the operational plan or where in the operational plan it is, so it's part of the information to go back. Or having you all share with Cory, what is it about these topics that has brought it to your attention and why you would like it to bring it to the attention of the management team? So maybe you all can enlighten Cory.
Or, and I like in the time you have left, if there even is a way just for you, like, what are the ones that describe your interest, even at a, just a high level? So that, because we do have a cabinet retreat tomorrow, and we're going to be talking about setting a timeline for updating this. Yeah, that's a pretty healthy list, and maybe there's three to five that come to the top for you as a group of six, and you find some kind of consensus on that, at least narrows that list down a little bit for us.
So here's...
And to step back for some context on why we're having this conversation is because for many years now, board members have individually expressed, you know, like, this is something that's really important to me, what, like, how do I bring this forward? And to really avoid the surprises later of some subgroup of us have, bring forward something to vote on unexpectedly, this really just helps us have more trust, transparency, and clarity as to where we actually have, A, an interest, and B, consensus across multiple board members of interest.
I think in years past, maybe, Kim, when you were here before, in work sessions with Kate McGuire, I think you did this a little more informally.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you would kind of do this exercise more regularly, we haven't been able to do this, or we haven't done it this way a long time, probably since I, maybe when Jim Baugh was here you did it last?
I don't know.
Maybe? No? Okay.
So this is the first time.
So it's gone on five years, then, right?
And again, the notion here isn't a commitment, it's to tease out from you, what are these interests? So as you look ahead to the next year, is it something that fits? Is it something that's already in process that you can then inform your constituents or other board members about? So here's what I would suggest. So you have, I think, blue sticky dots by each of your places, and we have other colors. I would invite each board member to place three dots on what are your most important topics? What is of most interest to you to bring forward or have the administrative team potentially act on? So the list is over here on this poster board, you have sticky dots at your spot. So the blue ones will just indicate this vote before discussion. And then we'll get a little bit more context, and then I'm going to give you... And then, I'm gonna give you a different color sticky dot so that we can talk about after a discussion, what is it that you would like to prioritize? Does that make sense to you?
I mean, including purple or not purple then? The purple items?
I would say not purple.
I would say...
I would say including purple, but...
If you did purple, we would just work to align them to the things we feel like we might already have.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that not voting for, if I'm not voting for one of the purple ones, doesn't mean that it's not one of my highest priorities.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking.
So...
Yes, my expectation is that it would already be...
Because I might, one of my, I would probably put them on purple ones, but there are some things that are high priority for me that I would like to put into the learning phase. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. You want them to be new.
Yeah. I want them to be new also.
Not that they have to happen right away, but just like a...
Maybe we do two different colors of dot?
Yes, you will. Yeah. The blue is this, it's a preliminary vote. And by the way, there are no commitments from either of these votes tonight. It's so that the superintendent can get a sense...
Not a consensus tool.
Yeah. This is to get a sense of where you are before we have the discussion. And then, when we have the discussion, I will give you different color sticky dots so that we can say the pre and post context for the vote. So, you can decide whether you want it to be on a purple or not purple one because there might be something about purple that hasn't been explored, that the administrative team is moving forward with its plan and there's something else connected to this that the board would like to see. So, we'll discuss.
Two questions. If I forgot something, can I still put it down?
If you...
A topic?
There's a topic?
Yeah. And maybe it's already related to one of these, but...
What topic are you...
I was thinking about just learning more about the process and timeline and requirements around IEPs and Bible four.
That's probably special ed.
Yeah. So, if that, maybe if that's into solutions for special education or one of the others, we could...
For who? For parents, for staff, for...
For parents.
For parents, yeah. So, they do, I know they do lots of training. They're required to, required to by statute. So, I think that could fit under the...
Solutions for Special Ed.
Special Ed Opportunity Review Action Plan. It's the action plan, which next year will be a year two item in the same column.
Because I think there is this, there's still a perception, and I shouldn't even say perception, I think the experience is still out there that people have to jump through a bunch of different hoops and hire all these outside agencies and get, yeah, to actually get an IEP.
If you can help me get 130 rules out of Minnesota, Tim. To back to the federal law, we wouldn't have so many of those barriers. That's a problem in Minnesota for sure. Right, Tim? We've been lobbying on that for a long time. Yeah. I don't mean, I'm with you. Testify that again. You know, it's hard. It's really tough. Yeah. So, couldn't agree more.
So, I've noted that topic. There is a topic called Solutions for Special Ed. But how about if you all do your blue vote? And then, I'm gonna give you a different color after we have a conversation.
There might be some interest in just like learning sessions too, because there's things that we don't know. We don't understand what we're hearing because we don't know enough of the topic.
Yeah.
How many are you sure?
Three.
Just something. I'm not sure. I'm sure you like sure dots.
Yeah.
Now, we can't, why don't you just go cross it out, go in with a dot? That takes the longest.
Yeah. The blacks are the ones I think staying as a year two or three.
People see, it's an implementation, it's action, there's a lot of work that gets done. This is the next step. Well, one there's tomorrow or soon. Which one's tomorrow? I'll keep up the operational plan.
Yeah.
Other times, I may wish to go in.
We did that one last year.
Yeah. I just tried to...
I took it hard for you.
Thank you.
We're trying to look down some?
Well, kind of.
So, this is what we... Well, we'll talk to...
I can't, I just...
Six to nine, like a certain time or not necessarily?
I think we always reserve six to nine.
You need to, they need to...
Yeah, I, I, she got it first.
The teacher always...
Okay. I don't know. This is really hard because I feel like all of these things are really important.
They are, but you have limited resources, time, energy, people, capacity.
I know. That's the hard thing, right?
It is. That's a super hard thing.
Suppose you want the dots back?
Oh, I have green now.
Christina, are you gonna take these dots back?
Uh, well, they belong to the district.
Sherry, you have two. So, Sherry is gonna...
Yeah. I had them from Sherry.
She makes her own four colors and lots of dots.
I'm just like, these are really also happening things.
The dot and poster button.
You're talking to the woman that fought for a skunk pellet that your family white elephant gave.
A what?
Skunk pellet.
What's that?
The pellet of a skunk.
Oh, like the, the fur.
Like an actual, like...
Oh, that's funny.
It was supposed to be a joke, but I was actually fighting for it.
That's awesome.
Okay. So, if we take a look, can everyone see the, I know you can't probably read the little writing here, but I will. So, you have three votes under mentorship program. And then, the rest are two votes each here. Youth involvement, engagement in advisories and decision making and as board representatives. So, kind of elevating student voice. Couple of votes for school start times. Couple of votes for portrait of graduate and scholar goal setting. Couple of votes for aligning community resources to district and sites. Couple of votes for achievement, for excellence summit. And then, one each for evaluation of the subcommittees and committees, for parent and family engagement, for reading curriculum. So, that's kind of how it lays out there. Corey, I think was gonna take you through a few items just to give you some, a little bit more information. And maybe Corey, starting with the ones that are in purple that have some votes by them.
Well, I think I kind of already shared, those are likely tied to an existing initiative that may be just worded differently and we're not clicking as far as the vocabulary. And I've done just a quick assessment on the things I think might be moving from learning now into implementation. Those implementation times, I might need to stay for a second year or move into standard was, this is part of what we do now. So, I need to do that with our leadership team. It's not just me, but I'm just giving my quick assessment of things. So, what you're doing here is potentially populating the new items for learning work. And I was just sharing with Kim, I'm a little nervous about the items that need a multi-year effort, like the special improvement plan, that's gonna take, that's probably a one to three year. We're gonna have to take those recommendations and say, this is year one, year two and three. And there's some other items like that. So, there's other ones here that are sliding over. We did our learning work and this middle column's gonna get longer.
It's gonna be a multi-year implementation.
Yeah. So, just really be thoughtful, organizational capacity. But we needed this step first to see what ones rise to the top for you so that we can do some analysis about what, what can we take on as new study, as new piloting, as new, things like that.
I'm sorry, my contract's not even signed yet. How, how, how is our staff supposed to handle the weight of this?
Well, you heard me say that we need to be thoughtful about that, right?
Right.
Especially if we do get some new mandates.
Just you literally added something every year to learn and then that's, that's then another committee.
Well, the idea we set was to move through the phases. And this doesn't reflect what's sunsetting. So, some of our work may be replacing, like, yes, curriculum is a heavy lift, but, you know, we'll always have a curriculum moving through. So, I don't think it's meant to keep adding. In fact, we've talked a lot about needing to reduce and eliminate things. I think that's what's missing from this particular picture as to what is this replacing or what's coming off the plate? I think we're 100% agreement. We don't want to just keep adding.
The short answer is, the short answer is, these things here will come off because it's just, it is standard. We just want to reflect that it had shown up newly in this column this year. And then, you know, there's a number of items here. We did building and better future phase one, so that's moving over. The, this year's curriculum adoptions in science, physics, chemistry and math, those are gonna be standard work, right? Because we've done those adoptions. The special ed one will stay. So, the other one that might will move over, you know, rise has become something a part of what we do, that's a standard work thing now. We left it in this phase two, but I think, you know, that, that's probably in my mind, quick twishes, that's an established thing. The, all the things in D, emergency preparedness, three-year operational plans, cybersecurity, print study and online enrollment, those have been implementation. I think they are just becoming part of what we do, are standard practice. So, those might move over. So, that gives you a taste for some of the things that'll slide. But there's a, most, if not all, of the learning work items slide into implementation because we've done the studying piece. Yes, we slowed down to create capacity in our LGBTQIA history and culture, so that potentially stays as learning work. But all the others are gonna slide into implementation because we've done the studying, piloting steps. So, it'll look a little different as we get. But I gotta have those conversations with our leaders and really get a flavor from those departments. Are they ready to move in that direction? And Kim's got a great point. We don't know what's coming by the end of the session, legislatively, that now we gotta do in addition.
I think a board interest also means, can we study this and understand this? Not necessarily say we've made a decision, right? Again, no decision making, but I think some things are interest to study and understand should they become learning work or not. So, I guess I would say, don't overreact in terms of like, oh, the board is saying we're gonna dump all this in, we're gonna do it now. I think interest means interest to study and understand, especially like the early start times.
Yeah. I just think, be aware that that still works for people.
Yeah.
It do.
Yeah.
And that's what their sensitivity is right now. And maybe it's just because it's the week before spring break and everyone needs a break, but...
And pacing too.
Even the referendum alone is a big, big one.
Yeah. When is the right time to explore an interest?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I just don't want to overwhelm people or when this is listened to later be like, oh, my gosh, the board is gonna do all this because, no, we're just expressing interest and understanding and maybe some of it will become a board direction. It may not.
Well, some of it, we might want to wait to even start exploration until we've completed some other things.
So, that's where the three-year version of this can come in.
Exactly.
We've only been using the one year, even though on the cover it says three.
Yeah.
So, maybe you're saying, I'll make up a hypothetical. We're gonna start with study times in two years. We're gonna study that, not this coming year, but the next year. We make the commitment. Or it's three years out of whatever, right? And so, you spread them over a three-year cycle instead of already landing. We've only used the one and you've been pushing us on my...
I have been pushing for ever like...
I know. We needed to get this practice in place first. So, maybe that's the way you can capture some of these things. How do we spread those out over a three-year cycle?
And it's always a rolling three-year. We've had some districts, because of the capacity issues, say we're adding a fourth and say we're gonna do learning work in, we're gonna begin the learning work in year four. So, it's on the plan and it's a topic of interest, but because of capacity, they're saying in terms of how we can implement successfully, this is what's happening. To Tanya's point, this is also to tease out from the board what your interest areas are. So, you're not surprising each other.
Yeah.
And you're not surprising the administrative team with, I really want this to move forward and therefore, we're gonna have a conversation. What I would suggest is that we have a discussion from the board on some of these areas, especially when the ones that have two or three dots by them, to get a sense from you on why it's important or why you're suggesting it as a topic of interest. And again, I'm gonna say it's informal consultation, there are no commitments right now. This is a conversation to get from you what you're interested in so that the administrative team can kind of think, how does it fit? How might it fit? Is it a matter of getting information back to you about where an initiative is or falls in the operational plan? And just to increase the level of understanding. Does that make sense? So, can we get a sense from you on, so the mentorship program is up there that has three blue dots by it. Board members, can you share your interest in that mentorship program?
Yeah. So, for me, I think that it's critical for every student to have access to a mentor. That can take many different forms, but to say, you know, how do we better understand what students, what scholars are participating in? So, that may say, you know, a big chunk of our scholars are already in after-school activities, have access to an adult. So, I just, I just want to be able to see the bigger picture and say, how can we better achieve that every single scholar has access to an adult that can operate in the capacity of a mentorship? It doesn't necessarily mean a formal mentorship program up and down, but it's achieving that end goal of every scholar has access. Even, I've talked with, again, my own idea generation, because I'm really passionate about this, whether it's in the school system or in a community organization that promotes this. But what it, like, scholars are already working at a job. What if we, and there's a lot of local businesses who have said, you know, I would love to take the next step and mentor this young person. Okay, well, what if in their window, city of Maple Grove, they're part of a youth mentorship program and they commit to working with that young person that works in their shop already, in their business already, taking one more step and now they can be recognized and put in their window, I'm part of the Maple Grove, Brooklyn Park, whatever, youth, youth mentorship program or investment or something. So, to me, it's multifaceted. It's not one district K through 12 program. It's how can we be creative to work with partners, to, where there is a gap, maybe have opportunities in the school, Rotary does strive. There's many different organizations that want to be partnering with us. How can we try to seek that every scholar has access to somebody and something to help them?
Yeah, I would just add on to that, I've put one of my dots at the mentorship thing, but also with the, what is it? Oh, the portrait of graduate and scholar goal setting and the, where's the other one? Community, aligning community resources. To me, those three things all belong together as a high priority in a sense of exactly what Tanya's talking about. It's statistically proven that students that have just one single adult that cares deeply about them have a better chance at success than a student that doesn't and that's involved in their academic success. So, if we have a mentor or we have a person in that building who's talking to them on a regular and consistent basis about what their graduation plans are, how they're gonna get to graduate, even our highest achieving students, I've had high achieving students come to me and say, I just realized that I'm not gonna graduate on time because I didn't know I had to fulfill this requirement, even though they're doing really well, right? So, making sure that kids have that before they get to high school, for me, is a super, super high priority. But then, having that mentorship piece, to me, it's all just one thing. But making sure that every kid has a plan and a goal and a person who's like their person.
Was there a third board member that ticked that, pushed that dot?
Mentorship or the portrait, I did portrait of graduate too. And maybe, I think, you know, we may have intended the same MSBA session a while, a few years ago. But that's come up on our own measures, goal setting, having somebody talk about my goals.
Even though they're doing really well, right? So making sure that kids have that before they get to high school, for me, is a super, super high priority. But then, having that mentorship piece, to me, it's all just one thing. But making sure that every kid has a plan and a goal and a person who's like their person.
Was there a third board member that ticked that, pushed that dot?
Mentorship or the portrait. I did portrait the graduate too, and maybe I think, you know, we may have intended the same MSBA session a while, a few years ago. But that's come up on our own measures, goal setting, having somebody talk about my goals. I think we're, we're a district that's lagging in the portrait of a graduate work.
Was there another board member that selected mentorship program?
That was me.
What was your thinking?
Similar, but divergently, having students mentor others. Like, I know we do some of that, like the web program or link or some of those things, but if, if a student can have their person that's a little bit older, there's a different kind of relationship that happens there. I'm not saying we have to do it, but that's a, an interest.
Thomas, as you put on your coat, what were your topics that you would like us to know about?
I mean, I like all of them. And I don't even remember. So I did school sites. One, because I feel like that's a topic that always comes up, especially as we continue to focus on academic excellence. Making sure that we're setting scholars up for success at the start of the day. And I don't know if starting school at 7:00 AM is setting them up for academic excellence, but just exploring that topic and seeing if there's a better way that we could or should do it. Aligning community resources at district and sites. So I think similarly to the mentorship program or any other resources that we can get more deeply involved in our schools. And then youth involvement, engagement, and advisories. So I think you already know that I'm not particularly thrilled with the current school board rep program. And so I'm anything that we can do to better engage students and give them a greater voice. So that's.
On that line, just I just, when we go back to the subcommittee topic, we actually used to have a recruitment strategy for recruiting students to participate in certain committees like DEPAC. And I think we should probably, that would be a good way to.
I just want to make a note that all these things that we're talking about is still the topic that we've always been aligned on. Family and community engagement and involvement. It's all under that same.
Yep.
Well, now like what you're saying Heather too about when you look at mentorship and you look at academic excellence and goal setting. For me, it takes the whole scope of helping kids that are struggling deserve mentors and deserve help. And also the kids that are excelling can benefit from the mentors, the goal setting. So I like that it encompasses all of those things. And, and I also put my dot, that was kind of what we're, not supposed to do, but on the, the trust building, family engagement. Because I think, and I mean, that's a proven thing too. If we don't have high trust between the community, the board, the district, we're, we're not gonna make, we're not gonna be thriving, we're not gonna make progress. And fresh off of interviewing Dr. Heil, that was some of the things I loved about her is talking about over-communicating, communicating, having transparency. And I think we're in a time of, to me, it's exciting to be building that and doing that more, more so. So being very clear and communicating and transparent on that. So I think that's, to me, that's number one. I mean, I don't know how you do other things without having trust and communication, just like in any relationship.
Well, you're starting from a good point, because remember our survey results said, we're doing a good job with those things, right? Despite some perceptions that are out there, the random survey said, we do a, it was a 90% in communication. Even though we've been through the wringer on a lot of things, there's still generally underneath all that, some really foundational trust still with the district, and that showed up in our referendum too. So we have a nice place to start with to build on it, right?
On the parent engagement, I did in my, with the original Times Four of Us. I did specifically have a thought on, there's some districts that do some upfront, start of the school year work with parents in a more innovative way. Maybe Jackie, you were even telling me this about like the start of school conference before a student even steps in the door.
And found orientations.
Yeah. So I, I was just, again, this, my thinking on all of this has always been the spirit of, spirit of achievement and excellence. And that kind of upfront parent engagement and understanding and knowing the student before they even come into their class. I think it's been pretty neat to see some other districts do.
The other aspect of that, that I have talked about so many times that I, I would love to see us implement is like an assembly of sorts where parents are getting introduced to the staff of the school, what the school's expectations are, and how they can be a support to their child and where to go for resources within their building. Because a lot of times you don't, a lot of parents just don't know that information, especially if they're new to the building and especially at grade level transitions.
And maybe that's some like of the consistency. So some of the things that we're already doing well in the district or do, maybe it's just not consistent across the district.
Yeah, because some of our schools do already do some of that kind of stuff.
Right. And there are some districts that have kind of minimum expectations for what you would expect at every school, right? So there is some minimum expectations around family engagement, but that also can be supported at the district level. Because you wouldn't want each school doing its own thing and communicating through its own system. And you do have an office of family engagement here, correct? And so getting a sense of what you're interested in here, it sounds like a lot of the touchpoints that you as a school board are talking about in these topics have a lot to do with the connection to community. Which I guess makes sense, given that you are the community representatives to the school district. Where does your, so your foundation fit into some of the work? How involved is your foundation in supporting some of the programs and mentorship and connections with community partnerships? This is what I don't know.
The 279 Foundation?
Yeah.
More, that's more of a grant giving organization, so it's more of a funding stream.
So not a-
Yeah, Brian's office is more the community engagement. And it, like, so the resource or the community alignment is how can we ensure that we don't ever turn away a volunteer? Can we ensure we don't ever turn away a dollar? How do we be disciplined about knowing, you know, Brooklyn Park Rotary only gives money to Brooklyn Park schools. Maple Grove Rotary gives money to Maple Grove schools. How do we have a complete picture to make sure that the flow of resources is balanced and that we're maximizing, capturing all of the dollars, all of the support, all of the volunteers that are out there in the universe and that we never turn somebody away? But that's Brian's office is more, is the community engagement.
Yeah, I, I specifically recall like with the scoreboard situation, there were businesses in Maple Grove that were willing to contribute to the same type of scoreboard for Brooklyn Park. But for some reason that didn't happen because of what? I don't know.
Well, in that case, that again, like every site has some degree of uniqueness. Was that the number one priority?
Right, it wasn't.
Or was it something different at that site that they wanted to use dollars on for their need, their, their preferred upgrade, so to speak?
But connecting them to those, those people and saying, maybe that's not what our need is, but maybe you can support our school in this way.
Yeah, and we've had a lot of discussions over time about ensuring that we don't have inequities develop over that.
Right.
And I think having that good clarity and maximizing the dollars across the district enables that.
But particularly like what you said with the volunteers, like I, I remember being turned away at Basswood as a parent. But if somebody would have said, hey, you know, Christview really needs a parent volunteer, I would have gone there.
So you have a lot of interests that you've expressed here. What I don't know is, and Corey, do you have a sense for the interests that have been expressed by the board? Is there a landing place for these or would it require some more work to explore and study?
We definitely need greater understanding. I mean, we've talked about the mentor part before. I think there's, there's lots of tentacles to that. We definitely can't make that look like we're giving away unit work from our existing staff. So how we complement our existing, like I don't want our counselors saying, here, we're finding more counselors without hiring counselors, right? So we have to be really deliberate about how we talk about it and, and what it is and what it isn't, right? I think you all, and I'm with you on, we all want every child to have a caring adult, the connection at school. So whether it's your science teacher, whoever it is, could be the custodian, it could be the, could be anyone, right? So that's back to that ment, and is there training to be a mentor? There's lots of questions I have about what, what's the common standard for being a mentor? Because some, you know, there's lots of variability, right? So it needs to have some planning. How do we take and expand our current volunteer? How do we even, remember we talked about the repository idea, like who are our community partners? How do we know who those people are? Maybe there's more than we are aware, but we don't, we don't capture it. Yeah, we have a relationship with them. We do that.
We need a directory.
Maintaining a directory.
And we need to direct them to where, to be aligned with our needs. Because it doesn't help us if a judge comes in and does things differently.
Better than all those things, we can create even stronger partnerships with those that exist, right? So there's some, maybe some technical things behind it too. So I guess I need a little time to unpack it.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm hearing some themes around student voice, which you've expressed for a while. And my, my assumption, which is always dangerous, is that it's happening somewhere in the organization in some form and maybe what we would consider as a pilot project. But to be able to say, who, who is doing the work and how, how does that fit with the operational plan and bring that back to the board?
I think there's lots of examples of student voice at the sites. So what you're asking for is added student voice at the district level, whether it's committees or what's your next iteration of the student board reps? We have the access to the DBA. We started with what was the entry point and we actually, when we asked kids who applied, what they could give, right? So we went with what they're willing to give and what can we expect, but now maybe we keep building on the model. Knowing that you're the elected officials that need to make the decisions, you're gonna maybe get informed or in consultation with student, students. We have amazing scholars that sit on our board already. We're taking what they can give us to some degree. Because there were some, like, that sounds like too big of a commitment. So we're kind of threading the needle a little bit with, but maybe it's back to how do we try to build involvement with even just, once we get the committees clarified? Just ways to expand and then how to have, I think Thomas's point is he'd like to see greater actual voice and feedback on some of the district-wide decisions. And how do you do that without circumventing your roles of elected decision makers, right? And so you can, if you pair the two together, that's I think in the end.
That's what I really liked about having students on DEPAC, is we had students in each of the subcommittees and they were communicating with us the same way as the adults were, sharing their feedback, their input, what their daily experiences were. And their, that recommendation came, the recommendations came from them to the board. And some of them were implemented.
So again, trying to balance the capacity issues, I know there are some districts that have changed their structure around committees. So you have your formal committees that bring information up into the administrative team and the board, but you also have representative committees that are standing committees, and I do mean representative. Like some, one committee represents all the parents across every school and some are representative by demographics in the district and may even have a student advisory body. And that actually reports up to the superintendent, not the school board, so that the superintendent uses that student group as a sounding board for employee feedback. That is how some districts get their student voice, they change over their representation. It's a potential conduit for the board, the student board roles. And again, it's a way to get some of the representation you're talking about. It still takes work to do from your cabinet, but it might be a way to meet multiple needs. I don't think it, it addresses some of the new programs that you're talking about. Those are things that you have to look at over the long term. But kind of big picture, connecting community, increasing student voice, connecting adults to students and kind of redirecting resources. Those are things that I think your cabinet can probably think about.
It likely has to start in a learning work year or more. I don't know, but that's where it starts, where you give plenty of runway for staff, the capacity that they have to study. What are the models out there? What are the systems out there? Bring back recommendations, do the study, you know, learn from what other systems can do, make it our own, you know, that whole process of learning work.
I could give you three to four years of how to use student voice.
So that research, testing, and development of possible initiatives, that's how we label it right at the top. I think that's probably the space we're in, right?
Do, do we currently utilize the student advisory councils at the high schools to communicate to the superintendent at all?
Not directly. I get that through the principals and, you know, the cabinet, right? That comes through that kind of chain of command. I do my own listening sessions. Done those every year.
So again, so it may come back to, you know, do we already have something in place and there just needs to be a little more education? And then you say, yeah, that actually already meets the interest or we just want to hear more from that conduit that already exists. So again, I'd caution saying like signaling that these are going to turn into any initiatives. And still call them exploration or understanding or interest.
Like the parent nights or parent assembly ones you were talking about, I know we have sites doing that before school starts because I remember Kelsey saying, I was at my parent night at Maple Grove Middle and they told me this, this, and this. Maybe it's an issue of consistency or it's not standardized enough. Knowing that every building maybe does it a little, how you do it at Cedar Island's gonna look different than across the street of Maple Grove.
Yeah, the way they do them is different, for sure.
And do we have a common, like, objective and strategy and intended result from those?
Yeah. Probably just, again, time to study it and unpack what. We've had a lot of things that's kind of just, we've left to the sites to figure out. And over time, like what's that loose tight balance?
And how do you support the sites? So that you are not having different expectations from one family to another. So if you're a parent that has kids across three different sites and the communication expectations and the support systems are vastly different, it can be a frustrating experience for parents, you know that.
Oh, yeah.
Why you guys are here.
It's common across every district.
And imagine that English is not your language.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
And that complicates it even more.
So what I'm hearing is the board has expressed interest in some of these topics. Some of them are already in play in some way and we need, we may need to get information back to the board. And now it's for the superintendent and cabinet to think through, how does this fit? If it fits soon, is it something that we can put on the operational plan for in the future? And so it's nice to have Dr. Heil here to hear that future option. And then some of these, while they may be a bit more specific, might come up a level or two higher to be, we want to increase student voice. And so maybe the, the cabinet would be able to come back and say, here are some things that we're already thinking about. And it will be, it may be a multi-pronged, multi-year process to get ultimately to where the board and the administrative team are thinking alike and heading in that same direction. So, does that make sense? Does that fit with what you're thinking? I see a thumbs up. I see Jackie's starting to list a little bit. Tanya, does that fit for you? Sarah? Corey?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I need a little processing time to figure out how, like, I think the entry point is how to make this really feel like doable learning work, where we can study and come back. And again, it's time and energy of staff to do that, but clearly in the interest of the board, so focus enough.
But you've got commitments yet.
Right.
Right, right. This is just discussion, not blindsiding.
I mean, if they end up here, they're at least a commitment to study and research.
Yeah.
Because that's, they may not go to here, they may not go in the middle. And we haven't had a lot of experience with this yet, so so far they've all gone in the middle, right? So there's that. We're still new with the model.
Yeah, learning work means we're studying it and we may abandon it.
Or hold on it, like that's a two-year out thing. Now that we know more, we're gonna, that three-year concept, I think, is a good one to develop for us.
And, and some of these are, to my view, questions from the board. Is this happening somewhere? And it may very well be.
And so that's where, if we think about, you know, not everything needs to be a full-blown, in-depth analysis. Like there can be high-level feasibility that, you know, once you understand the interest or the request, like, what's a very high feasibility assessment that says it would require these things, this is not even on the radar for two years. Or it would require these things and that could be more near in. You're just, I think there's some steps before we ask people go and do lots of work on these things.
I agree. I mean, even when I think about like the assembly idea that I was just speaking about, I feel like that's one of those things that you could just kind of assemble the principles and have a learning conversation about what's being done. Well, maybe not even assemble, maybe email them, maybe do a survey, right? And then-
Google Doc.
Go, yeah, Google Doc to figure out kind of where everybody is before bringing everyone together and saying, okay, this is how we want to move forward. There's, some of these things I think could be quicker and less in-depth learning, I think.
And they may come back and say that would take a lot of work.
Right.
Yeah. It's like just the opposite of what you're thinking, which is, it seems simple, but to make it seem simple, it would take a lot of work.
Well, I guess what I meant by simple was the conversation would be simple, to make time to have a conversation versus implementation is a whole different thing.
That's the issue, to make time.
Yeah.
That's, that's the hard part. I'm just saying, as someone who works 70 hours a week.
And again, the board continues to have the interest expressed repeatedly that we don't want to add more to people's plates. So for anything new, there has to be something else that comes off. Or how can we, again, better utilize different resources to meet the same objective, just in a more creative way?
So again, this is so the administrative team is not surprised. This is to tease out what the board's, board members have been thinking about. And to say, how, or how might we export these possibilities at some point? Yes, okay.
Well, I like the notion of avoiding individual, not self-interest, I don't mean it in a negative way, but the whack-a-mole approach. Sarah's got an idea, then Jackie's got an idea, now we're just playing versus get the ideas in the pool. Let the ones you can align to surface, right? So we're not just running in the wrong directions.
Well, to be the word is prioritize too, because we know there's all these different things- We know the teachers have limited time and energy. So I think it's coming back again to prioritize out of the many different things.
And you already know how big that operational plan is.
That's kind of the hard thing about this whole conversation for me because I think a lot of things we're talking about are really great and wonderful ideas. But like my heart is take as much away as we can and just focus on reading and math and well-being. And, you know, like, I don't know.
Focus on the priorities?
Yeah.
All right. So I'm just going to check with Cory one more time.
You can't put the icing on the cake unless you got the cake.
Exactly.
So I'm going to close out, instead of shared messages, I'm going to try something new with you. We will take this information, as Cory mentioned, we're going to be actually meeting with the cabinet tomorrow. And these are not commitments from here, they're just ideas to explore. We have some more work to do to come back and kind of sift through the committees. Restructure, take a first swipe at doing some restructuring of how the committees may work. And we're happy to help you with that, Cory. And then in terms of the, the ELS overview, thinking about the possibility of using a guiding change document with some of the work around your committees as well. And now we have a sense of your topic areas. So as we think about the last three hours, rather than doing shared messages, I would like for you to be able to think about a rose, a bud and a thorn from our time together. Okay, so what was a positive highlight from your experience? And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to just put it here. I am not as good at drawing as some colleagues. So I would invite you to grab a marker and use words on this poster sheet to identify what was a rose for you, what was a bud and what was a thorn. So the rose is a highlight from your experience today. The bud is something that you're looking forward to or wondering about as we move forward in the future. So a little growth opportunity and a thorn, maybe something didn't go as you hoped it would or was a little bit more challenging than you, than you thought.
Is this just a ticket off the door kind of thing or are you going to read? You're not going to read?
I would love for you to come, put your words up there and then we'll take a quick look so that we can say what could we learn from, from the thorns and what are some of the highlights from the roses? So words and we'll take a quick look altogether. We have five minutes. And I have lots of smelling markers which people like, they're here.
That's kind.
Yeah, she said put words everywhere because the words are.
Words, yep. If you're great at drawing and you can illustrate like your daughter.
Just to summarize kind of, or like just a statement or?
A statement, words, thought. Impression.
How can I say, can I do it, like?
No, no.
And it's just like you're not employed yet, so.
And if there's a marker that's not working, it can go right in the trash.
Thanks.
I was going to say.
Yeah. Traffic.
And since we've been sitting for three hours, you can come back.
I didn't write it down what my story was. I'm not feeling that.
Luckily, I have great teachers.
Okay, okay.
Nice to be in your backyard.
Yeah, yeah. Is your daughter still here?
She'd better be.
If you want to. Stand since we've been sitting, but you don't have to. Don't take a trip. Look.
Yeah, she's not here. In trouble, I'm going to have to find over shoes, call for some support. I have the keys.
She's in walking distance of home.
Well, that's true.
She left a wind.
The wind was chilly today. When I was running, the difference between the wind being at my back versus going into the wind with the sun was dramatic.
Oh, I know.
It'd be like 10 degrees difference.
It was, yeah.
It looked really bad.
Okay, so I'm going to stand with the vine up. The thorn here, the realization of our limitations, time, energy, capacity, that, that is always a bummer. Disturbed by legislation that may not be funded. And would have liked to get further on the committee topic. Understand that. So as we go up to the bud, something that kind of we're looking forward to. Discovering agreed upon interest areas, more discovery, trust is a bud. New potential initiatives being aligned. Excited to dream about the possibility of what the board has listed here and seeing how ideas play out. And then your roses, what you're happy about. Collaboration, positivity, being future focused, the energy, being conversational. Board members working well together in a collegial way. Candor, authentic, real. Everyone came to the table with positivity. Our unity on heart for all our schools and working together. So there we have it. This is our time tonight. I'll be talking with Cory as soon as tomorrow. And the rest of the cabinet. Any other parting thoughts for tonight?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. It was great.
Yeah, thanks Christine.
So this work session is adjourned at 9:01 PM. Thank you.
Pretty good facilitation, right on time.
Christine, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Christine.